Good evening, Council. Council is now in session. Before we proceed, Councilman Fawcett has requested to be allowed to participate electronically. A motion to that effect would need to be presented for council consideration. Vice Mayor Bennett?
I move to Councilmember Roger Fawcett be approved to participate electronically in today's regular session because he is unable to be present because of medical condition.
Councilman Goldberg?
Second Mayor?
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Bennett, a second from Councilman Goldberg. Is any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Labarlo?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
At this time, I would request everyone stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Spirit, be with us tonight as we handle our city's business. Give us your guidance as we make these decisions. Bless everyone present tonight with us. Continue your support for the people of the Ukraine in their fight for freedom. Give comfort to the wounded and the families that have lost loved ones. Also, look after the Americans being held by the Russians improperly and against their will. Bless our nation, bring our people together, and we ask for all of this in your holy name. And let us all say, Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of May the 18th, 2022 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. The Code of Virginia is presented. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closing.
Motion is ordered, which the pleasure of council. Councilman Johnson?
Move for approval.
And Councilman Williams. Got you turned on. We get a second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Labarlo?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next item is approval of the minutes from the November 17th, 2021 work session in regular meeting, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Move to approve.
And a motion for approval from Councilman Williams, Councilman Goldberg?
Second Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg. Is any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Labarlo?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to special presentations. We do have a proclamation in recognition of National Emergency Medical Services Week. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight's proclamation is in recognition of National Emergency Medical Services Week, which extends from May 16th through May 22nd and is served throughout the Commonwealth in the United States. With us this evening to accept the proclamation is Fire Chief Michael Rocky.
Good to see you again. Good to see you. Madam Clerk, will you please read the proclamation?
Whereas in 1974, President Gerald Ford authorized the recognition of emergency medical services personnel to acknowledge their role in ensuring the health and welfare of our communities. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of a wide variety of trained professionals, including paramedics, firefighters, police officers, emergency nurses, emergency dispatchers, educators, administrators, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas emergency medical services employees engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills in order to provide a vital service to our citizens. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services practitioners by designating Emergency Medical Services Week in keeping with this year's theme, EMS Rising to the Challenge. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May the 15th, 2022 through May the 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and call upon all residents to express their gratitude to these dedicated public servants for their contributions in keeping Suffolk healthy and safe. In witness whereof and to, I here and to set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this 18th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2022.
Thank you, sir. What are you saying, Mr.?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and Mr. Moore, allow me to introduce Roger Stinet in a minute. I want to say first of all, we're a unique city. We rise to the challenge every day when it comes down to EMS service delivery. But I'm going to leave you with this before I turn over to Lieutenant Stinet for words from the people and the person who does it every day, who can speak on better behalf on what our medics and advanced EMTs do every day. We go to nine hospitals daily. If you think about this, from Southampton Memorial, Obece, Bell Harbor, Harborview, Maryview, Norfolk General, Chosens Hospital, the King's Daughters, Portsmouth Naval, and lastly Riverside because of 664 in the North End. Your medics are everywhere, and all they do is such a great job. And like the proclamation said, is we have relationships with every emergency department I just mentioned, and our neighboring departments of Chesapeake, Isle of Wight, and Portsmouth, as well as Night and Yellow Air Ambulance. But it all starts upstairs with our dispatchers, with our police officers, and our paramedics and firefighters. We deliver the best care, and we rise to the challenge every day. Now I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Roger Stinet, who I give words on behalf of our medics. Roger.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council and citizens. I'm Lieutenant Stinet with the City of Suffolk Fire and Rescue. Serve as EMS supervisor for the First Battalion on sea shift. And I'd like to, first of all, thank you for the time to say just a few words highlighting emergency medical services within our department. On paper, 429 square miles, population just over 94,000, and just under 18,000 calls for service last year, certainly impressive statistics. More impressive is the 300-plus men and women who stand ready to answer those calls, roughly 70% of which are EMS. So from Pewsville to Whaleyville, our members are cross-trained in fire suppression as well as EMS. The need and importance for comprehensive healthcare from scene to hospital has never been greater, and quite frankly, neither has our commitment to doing so. Along with our firefighters, EMS personnel, we partner with hospital staff, regional support resources to provide the best care possible to our citizens, and we are proud and happy to be able to do it. On behalf of the men and women of our department, I'd like to say it's our mission to embody the motto that is visible on each piece of apparatus: Our family protecting yours. But speaking from the perspective of our line personnel, it is truly a team effort. So thank you to the council, city leadership, to our chief, and our department leadership in helping us do what we do. Thank you.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you.
At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wished to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. If there are any items that members of City Council wish to remove from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Additionally, City Manager Moore has information regarding public hearing item number 10 and item number 12. Mr. Manager, please provide City Council with an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Staff is in receipt of two written requests from the applicants of item 10 and item 12 to have these items removed from your agenda this evening and have them considered at a later date. The following are the specifics on the two items. Item 10 is a public hearing to consider in ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a surface mining operation, barrel pit, on property located at zoning map 9, parcel 3, account number 252626000, CUP 2021013. The applicant's written request for item 10 was to defer to consideration for 90 days, which we bring it back to you on August 17th, 2022. In regards to item 12, is an ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk in order to amend the previously approved property conditions for Bennetts Creek Corridors Development Zoning Map 12, parcel 31*1, 32*2, 32*3, 32* *4, and 32*CH*1, account numbers 306004377, 306004378, 306004379, 306004380, and 306004381. RZN 2022-04 conditional. The applicant's written request for item 12 is to defer to consideration until the June 1st, 2022 meeting, and this is the second request by this applicant to defer this item. At this time, I would ask City Council consideration of a motion to amend the May 18th, 2022 City Council agenda to remove the public hearing listed as item 10 and the ordinance listed at item 12 from this evening's agenda and adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Just for clarity, anyone who is in attendance tonight regarding public hearing item number 10 and item 12, please note that the City Manager has advised that the applicants have requested to continue these items. Therefore, a motion to continue both public hearing item number 10 and item number 12 to the respective dates as outlined by City Manager Moore and to adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented is in order, and a motion would be in order at this time. Councilman Goldberg?
Mayor, move to table these or whatever we need to do on 10 and 12.
And adopt the remainder of the agenda.
Adopt the remainder of the budget, the agenda.
Councilman Ward?
Second.
Have a second from Councilman Ward. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, on the motion, we are deferring item 10 until August 17th on that motion, and item 12 until June 1st, correct?
Is it August 17?
Yes, that's our second meeting in August, 90 days.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second to continue public hearing number 10 and 12 and adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented in order. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Labarlo?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, are there any agenda speakers at this time?
No, Mayor Dooman.
Okay, we'll now move to presentation of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please present the items for consideration.
Item number 7 in ordinance to accept and appropriate additional funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation for Suffolk bypass intelligent transportation system improvements on the Route 58 bypass from the City of Chesapeake Limits to Holland Road, and item number 8, resolution to enter into a blanket resolution for fiscal years 2023, 2024, 2025, and 2026 with the Virginia Department of Transportation for various funding program.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Item 7, the Commonwealth Transportation Board has approved additional funds in the amount of $532,309 for the Suffolk Route 58 bypass intelligent transportation system improvements. These improvements include video traffic monitoring equipment, traffic speed and occupancy sensors, variable message signs, and associated fiber optic interconnection network. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of capital fund budget by $532,309. A local match of $58,200 is required and is provided in the FY 2122 operating in capital budget. In regards to item 8, is a resolution providing authorization for the city to enter into a new four-year blanket resolution committing the city to its local share of funding for projects under the Revenue Sharing Smart Scale Transportation Alternatives Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Program, Regional Surface Transportation Program, the Virginia Highway Safety Improvements, Federal Lands Access Program, Access Roads Program, and the State of Good Repair Bridge and Pavement Programs. The blanket resolution will be for fiscal years 2023, 2024, 2025, and 2026.
Council, any questions or comments about the items? If not, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. And we have Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval from Councilman Williams, Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Second from Vice Mayor Bennett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Labarlo?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we'll now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is in ordinance authorizing the lease of tract number 3091 for the purpose of farming on certain property owned by the City of Suffolk located at Lone Star Lakes. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, members of council, our purchasing agents doesn't appear to be here, so I'll go ahead with the presentation myself. This is regarding lease of property at Lone Star Lakes for agricultural purposes. If we could go to the next slide, thank you. Lease is for one year with option to renew for four additional one-year periods. Rent is for $2,240 per year for tract 3091. No increases in rent for the entire five-year period. See, receive only one bidder, farming only, hunting, trapping, signage, or timber harvesting not permitted. With that, with that answer, any questions you may have at the end of the public hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Amara Skinner. I'm the owner of the E-Firm, the Ex-Felon Entrepreneurship Retail Museum up the street. And I wanted to come in here and kind of familiarize you with some of the work that we do.
I'm sorry, sir. I think this is to speak to this particular ordinance. I think you signed up as a non-agenda speaker.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'll be towards the end.
Okay, well, I just asked if I was able to step up here, and nobody stepped, and I was told to come.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that, you know?
Because I'm ready to get in.
And you absolutely know how to get there now.
I understand. I'll get back in week.
There you go. And you got closer. Okay, do we have anyone who would like to speak to this item, which has to do with our lease? Are there any public speakers? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed, and an ordinance has been presented for council's in consideration, and a motion would be in order. We have Councilperson Butler Barlow?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval, and we have Councilman Johnson?
Second.
With a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Item number 10 has been continued. We now move to item number 11, which is in ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to restore a non-conforming structure to an extent of greater than 50% of its replacement cost on property located at 315 Boat Street, zoning map 34G23A, parcel 138, account number 353457000, and this is CUP 2022-4. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Kevin Wine, Interim Director of Planning and Community Development, will provide the staff report. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is a conditional use permit request to renovate an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling by more than 50% of its replacement value. It's important to note that this property was issued a stop-work order in January of this year, this past year, for commencements of renovations without obtaining the proper building and trade permits. The applicant was made aware by the city that the requested improvements would require a CUP as the projected improvement cost exceeded 50% of the replacement cost of the structure. So they did submit the CUP to come into compliance. The affected property is located in the Core Support Use District according to the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The subject property is located at 315 Boat Street. It is zoned RC, residential compact, and the surrounding area is comprised of other residential uses and properties zoned RC, as well as some non-residential uses. That includes the B2 general commercial district. The applicant is seeking a CUP in order to replace the roof, siding, windows, framing, drywall, fixtures, flooring, plumbing, electrical, and HVAC. As proposed, the front porch of the first story will be enclosed, as shown in the photo on the right, and the second story will be expanded on the top of the original first floor. Thus, the square footage of the dwelling will increase slightly. However, the footprint of the actual structure will remain unchanged. The assessed value for the existing structure is $8,100 per the City of Suffolk Real Estate Assessor, and the proposed renovation cost is $42,000, which of course exceeds 50%. The existing two-story structure home was constructed in 1940, and it's approximately 1,400 square feet, and has three bedrooms and one bath. The existing structure is non-conforming as it relates to the required minimum front setback of 20 feet and the minimum side setback of five feet in accordance with our unified development ordinance requirements for the RC District. A planning commission, at their meeting on April 19th, 2022, voted eight to zero to approve a resolution recommending approval of this application. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? And this is to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anyone to speak in favor of this ordinance? Do we have anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and a motion would be in order. Pleasure of council. Councilman Goldberg?
You'll ask Kevin to come back up one more time?
Just ask Kevin to come back up one more time. They have submitted plans of what they're planning to do to the home.
Yes, sir.
And rebuilding to put, I mean, I look at the pictures that you had of it, and the previous look looks a lot better than the existing look. And I'm hoping they're going to revert back to the original look with the porches and all of that on it, which looks to me a lot nicer and better. Are we aware of any, what they're exactly going to do?
I'm not aware of the specifics related to that. They would be required to submit, to submit building plans. This is outside of the historic district, so the exterior features are really not regulated as long as they meet our zoning setbacks.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, with that, I move for approval.
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Councilman Goldberg. Councilman Williams?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Item number 12 has also been continued. We have no resolutions this evening. We'll now move to staff reports, and we do have a staff report concerning residential development overview and infill development. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of Council. This will continue, this will continue the briefings you've had over the last two other meetings, or prior two meetings dealing with development issues. Tonight, we'll focus on infill development, and again, with us is Kevin Wine, our interim director of planning.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. This is part four of our residential development overview series. It's taken us several meetings to get here, but this is the last topic we look forward to discussing with you all and providing you some information on. This is infill development throughout the city. So I'm going to touch on infill from a planning perspective, what it is, where it's most prominent, the way the Comprehensive Plan talks about infill development and the zoning, the Unified Development Ordinance as well. And then we're going to get into some of the issues associated with infill. And this is going to be kind of a two-part presentation. I have Robert Lewis, the Director of Public Works here as well, who's going to talk really specifically some of the public works challenges with infill, specifically as it relates to drainage. So the first question is, what is infill? And it is a lot of things to a lot of different people. This is the UDO definition of it, but a small scattered vacant site which is surrounded or essentially surrounded by existing development, which because of its location configuration access requirements or adjacent development patterns, similar characteristics may necessitate special consideration during the development review process. And that's important because our UDO has several mechanisms to afford relief to certain property that is developed on infill sites related to specifically front setbacks as it relates to how the block has been developed. We see this most prominently in our downtown area where the base zoning layer is residential medium density, which the slightly larger lot sizes than you would expect for a downtown area. So you have many properties that have been developed decades ago, prior to the existence of Unified Development Ordinance, and then you still have an undeveloped lot, which would, in this case, be what we consider a legal, non-conforming lot. It existed prior to our regulations. It was legal at the time. It no longer meets our minimum standards. However, that does not mean they can't build on it. If they meet the minimum setbacks, they can get a building footprint on there. They can build. The other area that we see this most prominently is in our VC District within the many villages that we have in the city. Not all of the land in our villages are zoned VC, which is our Village Center District. But the VC District, which generally is surrounded by agricultural land, has some of our more flexible zoning requirements. The lot size requirement in the VC District is 5,000 square feet. There is no front setback requirement, and there's no minimum side yard or rear setback requirement. So you have a lot of existing lots and existing development patterns in these villages, and developers will find lots that are available for sale and utilize the ability to build a home by right. Here, we do have an example. This just so happens to be from Chucka Tuck at the intersection of Route 10 and Birch Lane. The photo at the top shows the property in around 2019, and then a year or two later, you have the bottom photo. This development was actually created through the minor subdivision process. They did subdivide what was one parcel into two parcels, but it still constitutes infill development. Nonetheless, they utilized an existing lot for the sake of development. So with that subdivision plan, they submitted it, we've reviewed it for compliance with our Unified Development Ordinance. They met the minimum lot requirements, and with that, they were able to get building permits to construct two separate single-family structures. So what does the comp plan and the Unified Development Ordinance say about infill development? I think this is important. It's a topic that is hit often in the comp plan. From a planning perspective, infill development, for all intents and purposes, is a great thing. We want to see land being utilized that exists for the purposes that align with our policies and regulations. But Action 61K of the Comprehensive Plan states that we should encourage construction of infill housing in the mixed-use core and core support districts. This primarily relates to our downtown area. There are a lot of legal, non-conforming lots in our downtown area that do not contain structures that, provided that they can meet our minimum regulations, could get a structure on there. It's also important to note that the Village Center District is really unique. When we talk about the mixed-use core and core support use districts, in a lot of ways, then that's the downtown area encompasses the downtown area and parts of northern Suffolk as well. However, the Village Center District is designed to operate like a miniature downtown in a lot of ways, to house several different use types together in one setting. So when we encourage infill development, it's important to note that in a lot of ways, our villages are these miniature downtowns where infill is appropriate as well. Action 62A states that we should utilize the adopted village initiatives plan to promote land use patterns with the rural villages, which support the construction of affordable and market rate units. Obviously, infill development within the villages aligns with that policy, and generally, the smaller the lot size, the more affordable home is. And then out of the Unified Development Ordinance, this is 31503F. This is regarding subdivision policies. And those are to protect the character and the social and economic stability of all parts of the city, to encourage the orderly and beneficial development of the community through appropriate growth management techniques, assuring the timing and sequencing of development. And then I'll focus on this part, the promotion of infill development in existing neighborhoods. So it's a, it's a topic that's discussed throughout our regulatory documents and our policy guiding documents. However, that's not to say there aren't challenges associated with it. So one of the reasons I think we've seen an influx in infill development recently is zoning allows for and encourages infill development. I touched on the Village Center District and the flexibility afforded there, but within the downtown area, the zoning administrator does have a great deal of discretion when it comes to looking at the established development patterns. If a home needs to encroach into a required front yard setback, our zoning administrator has the ability to look at the average of the homes that exist on the block in the downtown area and determine whether it is appropriate for that house to be brought up a little further, closer to the street. Existing neighborhoods largely, we're talking in our villages and in downtown, have been established many decades ago when there were fewer regulations. And I say fewer regulations primarily as it relates to, one, zoning requirements. Our current UDO circa 1999, however, we did have one in 1974, but a lot of this development happened well before then with little regulations in place. More importantly, and certainly more impactful, are changes outside of our control that have taken place, specifically stormwater regulations. They're regulated at the state level. Primarily, we enforce them here at the local level, but there's state policies that have changed significantly from when these neighborhoods were developed in the first place. Additionally, there are environmental concerns that are out of our control, particularly as it relates to non-title wetlands. We see this specifically in close proximity to the Great Dismal Swamp, but we are a Hampton Roads community, that we have low-line areas. Non-title wetlands do not fall into the jurisdiction of the city of Suffolk. Title wetlands do, but not non-title wetlands. Those are regulated by the Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of Environmental Quality at the state level. So these new development must meet current development regulations. So I touched on those stormwater regulations, the Department of Health Standards when it comes to a location of well and septic systems. Once again, that's a role the city does not play. That's a role the Health Department plays. We have regulations now. So what you're seeing is infill development may not look and feel very similar to what it's located next to. That's because it's been 50 years, and regulations now are on the books that regulate things like stormwater runoff or getting a positive grade away from the foundation to ensure that, to meet building code. So, single-family residential does not need to meet the same stringent stormwater requirements as larger residential and non-residential development. And I, certainly not an expert in that one, I'll defer to Robert when he comes up in a moment, but that's certainly a consideration. When we're looking at large development plans for residential subdivisions, the stormwater and drainage requirements are immense. They are well-engineered. The stormwater, they're not allowed to produce any more stormwater than they do present day, and we verify that through a very thorough examination at the time of plan review. Lastly, I touched on the considerations outside of our control, but I want to stress it, well and septic, that's approved by the Department of Health. We require their approval before we will release a building permit, but we do not regulate that. And that is Department of Health. And then environmental issues, as I noted, such as non-title wetlands, once again, not under our control. So that kind of concludes the planning conversation. I'll pass it over to Robert now, and he can touch on the drainage concerns.
Good evening, Council. This is certainly a topic that's very relative and one we have quite a bit of consideration and discussion on. So I'll try to give you kind of a brief overview, and I've actually got a couple of real-life examples to share with you, some of the challenges we face as we deal with this infill. So these three sketches in front of you, directly out of the state stormwater guidelines. So generally, there's what's called three basic types of drainage. Type A drainage says that all the drainage on the property from the rear drains towards the front, towards the street, and it's handled that way. Second type is what's called type B. Type B generally is just the opposite, the way the lay of the land is, the water drains away from the street towards the rear of the property, oftentimes along creeks, rivers, and other natural drainage ways. That's the way it's going to do. And the bottom one is type AB, so it's kind of a combination. Some of the water will drain to the front, some of it will drain to the back. Just kind of depends on the lay of the land. But those are the three common things, and that's the first thing we identify in every project, which one of these situations is going to be applicable for that particular parcel. Again, we have, it was interesting, Kevin and I both happened to pick examples in the Village of Chucka Tuck. This is Rin Road. So there's three properties there on Rin Road next to Goblin Boulevard that were just recently infilled in the last few years. You could see two of them previously had small structures on there. Those structures were purchased, demolished, and then the new homes were done. But again, what we require is every property comes in is required to bring to us a plot plan. So let me stop just a moment, and let's talk about subdivision development. When a developer comes in and is developing a subdivision, there are very stringent rules. We look at the entire subdivision as a whole. We design the streets, we design all the sanitary sewers, we design all the storm sewers. Everything is complete to know exactly where that water is and where it goes and how we treat it as we discharge it to nature. These infills, the state very clearly in its guidelines does not give us that authority. These are literally what it says as infills. As such, there's something called a plan in lieu of, or in lieu of plan. That's where the plot plans come in. These developers are required to bring us a survey that shows this lot, it has great elevations on it, and they show us what they're going to build, where it's going to be located. And one of the things we require is, we require those elevations on it. So we take a look at where the water is currently going, and then after that, they also include some drainage plans in that as to where it's going to next. So in this particular case, some of this water, this was an AB site, some of this water was draining towards the front. And again, if you, it's kind of small to see here, but if you get into details, you'll see part of this water is designed, it comes to the front towards Rin Road. Some of it goes to the rear. These lots actually naturally drain to the rear prior to this development. And again, one of the challenges oftentimes, sometimes it's very difficult to change that drainage pattern depending on the natural topography. But again, these two particular houses were designed, we reviewed it, they met the requirements, they were constructed, they both have my own septic systems. And I'll just tell you, my own septic systems are a challenge, because again, now you've got a built-up item in the middle of your yard, generally treating the sanitary sewer aspect, but also it does create issues with stormwater. So after these were done, you'll see here the three houses were built, and again, they followed all the rules and regulations. One of the last things we do is we go out and inspect, we make sure everything is graded according to the plot plan, everything is done. Now, one of the aspects of this during construction, just like any other construction, when everything is denuded of vegetation, it is certainly a challenge sometimes to keep drainage down to a minimum. But in the end, when these things are re-vegetated, everything's in place, as Kevin stated, they're generally required to have no more than and generally less than what they start with. And again, we redevelop that particular drainage. Again, in these cases, some of it comes to the front, some of it comes to the rear, goes through a natural drainage way that's been there for years. What I'd also draw your attention to, the next example, are the two lots immediately behind this. This actually fronts on Goblin Boulevard. These are actually under construction right now. The interesting thing about these two lots is they look pretty similar, but if you're familiar with that area, that area is actually depressed. So when you build a neighborhood, generally what you try to do is you actually try to make sure that your housing lots are higher than your street, so that you have somewhere for that drain water to go to, to fall in our drain water systems and take away. This, again, natural topography, and these lots are lower than the street, so it becomes much more of a challenge. The interesting thing about this, though, there is a drainage system along Goblin Boulevard. There are pipes out there, there are drop inlets, there's stub pipes, and the developer was able to take advantage of that. So in this particular case, where this water naturally was an AB, it drained to the front and the back, there was an opportunity here that this developer could bring fill soil in and actually raise this lot, push all the water to the front, and actually put it in the existing stormwater system. And you'll see some swales and different things in there to bring this water, put it in the stormwater system. I wish I could tell you that happens every time, but it doesn't. This is oftentimes the exception, not the rule. But there are sometimes opportunities on these infills to do this type of management of those stormwater items. So again, with that, there's certainly a lot of aspects, and stand available to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Council. Questions or comments, either from Mr. Lewis or Mr. Wine? Councilperson Butler Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure where to start. I have a lot of notes here. Thank you for using, I know y'all were expecting this, I know you are. I know that, I appreciate that you use examples from Chucka Tuck because we have many, many, many examples of Chucka Tuck. The infill development in Chucka Tuck and other areas of the city is, it's overwhelming. It's overwhelming. So I have a couple of things, like I said, I'm trying to get my thoughts organized here. Mr. Wine, you put up under the UDO this 31-503F. Can you get back to that slide for me? Okay. So, that says that we want to protect the character and the social and economic stability of all parts of the city and to encourage the orderly and beneficial development of the community through appropriate growth management techniques, assuring the timing, so on and so forth, la la la. So, a lot of the infill houses, while they meet the code and while they are checking all the boxes, they don't fit the character of the neighborhood. They don't match the existing structures. And I'm directing this at you because you're giving the presentation, but I'm saying this to the world. They don't fit the communities that they're being built in. And I see in the downtown areas where we're, you know, we're trying to put back houses, Councilmember Goldberg brought it up, we want the houses in a neighborhood to be similar to the other houses in the neighborhood. We don't want things to look out of whack. The couple that you chose in Chukutuck to show look pretty good. There are some that don't. They're large, large, two-story homes that are built right up to the line of the adjacent older property, and they don't match, and they don't fit. So, if we're trying to protect the character and the social and economic stability of these villages, we're missing the mark on that. There's another line at the bottom of that that says that we want to protect environmentally critical areas, and I would submit to you that a low-lying area that is not a title wetland, that is being negatively impacted by sea level rise and by stormwater, even though those are not under the city's control, those are environmentally sensitive areas, and we're still approving houses in those areas. I also, I don't know where it could be in the UDO. I'm assuming it's in the UDO. We've got to have something that says, what I'm doing on my property cannot negatively affect the person on the property next door. So, Mr. Lewis, to your point, we're trying to make these lots drain to the front and to the back, into the existing ditches that handle the stormwater, and that's great until they start draining off to the sides and flooding out the next-door neighbors and causing their septic systems to fail. So, there's got to be something in our ordinances that say, if I'm building something new, I can't shove my stormwater onto your property and cause you all kinds of problems. And it's got to be in there somewhere.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
You look like you took a step forward. I was going to give you a chance.
If you're with me, I'll try to explain it. I did mention earlier on these plot plans, so nearly every one of these lots have some type of swale, some type of depressed area to drain the water. So, again, one of the things we strive for is for the water on a lot to not leave that lot and go to an adjacent property owner. And again, we try very hard for that. Now, we, the state code requires us to design what's called a 10-year storm. When the bigger storms come, obviously, those bets are all off because the rain is so intense.
Right. But we're still approving these houses being built.
Yes, ma'am.
Another part of this whole thing, and I don't know where it fits either, because, like I said, I have four pages of notes here. So, we have the village center zoning. We have this idea that we want to have similarly characteristic homes built in the area, but we're allowing zero setbacks because of the village center zoning. And again, I don't know how to fix that, but that also is, it doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense. And again, it's negatively impacting the adjoining properties. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the mound septic systems that you said are challenging, and we're having problems with those. Those systems, they're widely available. I've talked to the Health Department. I know that they're okay, and they're being approved by the Health Department. But they're being put on lots that people for generations have been told that they won't perk and you can't build here. And if they won't perk, and you could never build there, and suddenly they're sold off or they're auctioned off because of non-payment of taxes because people can't do anything with them, and suddenly a mound system and a giant house appear, there's something wrong with that, too. So, I need to stop and take a breath. But anyway, I just, I thank you for letting me express those concerns. It's not just Chukutuck. It's Pewsville. It's, name other places. It's places in downtown. There's a lot of places around the city, and it's not just Suffolk. I realize that. You don't have to drive very far out of the area. If you go down through Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, into North Carolina, they're all over the place, and they're causing problems. They're causing problems, and I would like to see us try to figure out a better way to, if we're going to have infill development, let's at least do it to not tear up and destroy neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could address one point that I do share with you greatly, and that has to do with the environmental issues. So, one of the things that's been helpful to us in the not-too-distant past was we'd look at a lot, and the first thing we said, that's obviously got wetlands on it. You can't build on it. Go to the Army Corps. Generally, the Army Corps would say, sorry, you can't build on it. Something has changed. Rules have changed. Now, we have lots that come in that are 100% regulated wetlands, and through a process, they are being allowed to mitigate that by either paying credits or creating other offsets. And again, they're bringing these things back and saying, well, we got a permit from the Corps. You got to let us permit. And again, we do not have the authority under city code, once they address that environmental issue, to say no because it's by the federal government. That frustrates me greatly, too, but unfortunately, that's just one of those times when our hands are tied.
Councilman Johnson.
I just want to ask one question, Robert. You say because of our city code, can we change our city code? We have that same problem in my borough, and it's becoming a real, kind of staggering my side. I'm sick of it because these people are moving into the houses, and they're moving into a mess, and they don't even realize it until they get in there.
So, we, my staff and I, we have been investigating this and reviewing it, and we have not yet come up with an answer. Again, it has to do with the hierarchy of government, and certainly federal government, and federal rules trump local government. I wish there was an answer, but at this point, we do not have an answer to this issue about environmentally sensitive.
We can't look at it through stormwater or through, I mean, instead of our own regulations as far as, it's a real problem. I mean, it's gotten to be a bigger problem in recent years, but don't stop looking, please.
We're not.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Ward.
Mr. Lewis, you said that you know it's a problem. Do we have any, are we trying to fix that problem? I mean, if you know it's a problem, are we trying to fix that? Do we put a halt on things? What's your intentions are?
Again, Council, when we do look at these, we're constantly trying to figure out if there's a way to work within the current laws to allow us to have a little more regulations, just like with the mound septic systems. You're correct. Many of these lots for years and years were wet, and a traditional underground septic system would not perk, and you could get a permit. Now, you have these new mound systems that essentially are above ground, and the state has gone to allowing those. We have no say-so whatsoever as to whether or not that regulation, that permit is allowed. They just walk in and say, I've got a septic permit. I can build. Septic used to be one of those things that kept these lots that probably should not be built upon from being built upon. That, again, is off the table. Some of this may actually require some changes at the state level. You know, as we lobby every year with the General Assembly, these may be issues we need to take back to the General Assembly and say, we need some help. We think we're not treating our citizens correctly by allowing some of this infill development. But again, at this point, we don't know that we have the tools. We continue to seek those, continue to ask questions, and continue to ask other localities and say, how are you handling this? But most everybody's just as frustrated as we are. To a great degree on much of this, our hands are tied.
So, you're telling me that the people that was already there, they would have to suffer for the new people coming and building?
Again, we strive very hard to try not to allow the new infill development to negatively impact the existing neighborhood, but you know, there's only so much of that you can do. You've got, what used to, an example, we find a lot of times when we start getting complaints, what we find is the neighborhood has been using these vacant lots for other purposes. Kids playing on it, growing gardens, maybe their drainage actually ran off their property and kind of settled here on this other lot, and it infiltrated in the ground. It was okay because nobody was there. When now somebody's claimed the lot back and putting a house there, and again, it's that balance. How do you balance one property owner's rights and responsibilities against another? We try very hard to be as fair and equal as we can, but there's only so much we could do at this point. We're bound by state code to follow certain rules.
Let me ask you this question. This is an example that had occurred. If you've got a new owner, and this owner have a house already there, and a new person come in, and this owner that got a new house complaining, and one of us, one of the city come out there, and you see that the owner of the new house is right, and the person that's building the house is affecting the person with a new home, what do you do?
We do everything we can to make them conform to the requirements of state code, which is all we can do.
When you said you said the developer, you don't hold him up, you tell him what's the problem is, and do he have to correct it, or he just don't even listen to you?
Again, state code is very specific about the process we have to do. So, first thing, we usually have to give notice. We may have to put a stop work order out there. If it goes on long enough, ultimately, it could go to some civil action by the city in court. But there's not a lot of teeth in the way we have enforcement on some of these things. But again, we have to follow the state code.
You probably don't know, but approximately, how many people you put a stop order on? I mean, how many houses? Is that's normal, not normal, what?
It varies. I think we put three stop work orders out this week on properties, but that's kind of abnormal. We don't normally hit that many. It just varies. Sometimes it's more than others. Sometimes it depends on the conditions like this week, and we get a lot of rain. Sometimes that precipitates issues, and we have to go back and re-inspect, and we find a problem that's got to be addressed, and we have to stop the development. Generally, we don't like to put stop work orders out. I'd rather ask for compliance and have them address the concern than to go the legal hammer right of just saying, we're going to stop you together. Let's find a solution.
Do normally, do the same developer go, don't listen to you, or you have a problem with, or what?
Sometimes.
So, you do have that?
Yes, sir.
So, you can't be more aggressive to him?
We do, but again, we're bound to follow the state law, the state law on how we handle those.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Benn.
I had a couple of comments and maybe questions on the infill housing and the setback. You were saying that, how does that work where you don't have to have the 15-foot setback on the side and the front?
So, this is primarily most prevalent in the downtown area, where there will be an established block of, let's say, 10 homes. One lot may be non, not developed, so someone is looking to develop that property. So, we look at the zoning administrator does have the discretion to look at the existing development pattern along the road to allow some flexibility, primarily as it relates to the front setback. So, if your required front setback in the RM district, it's either 20 or 25 feet, but if they need to be closer to the street and the average of that block is 10 feet, the discretion is there with the zoning administrator to make that decision.
Yes, because I see now that we're getting a whole lot more of the, I call them skinny houses, where you go upstairs, I mean, one way in, you know, you can't have two rooms side by side. And that began to me, again, may have some effect on the whole community when you come in and build.
Certainly.
Those type of houses into the community. So, I think we need to be looking at that.
Certainly. And to that point, we do have a minimum requirement for house width, which is 20 feet. That is still quite narrow, but we do have that in the UDO now.
Okay. My other thing, which you spoke on about the septic system, and I know the Health Department is the one that issued permits for that, but do the builders realize when they come in and get a permit, are they informed about the drainage system or the problem that exists where they want to build a house? Because some of them, just like you say, I know it's wetlands, but it's no drainage now.
Certainly, there are always exceptions. I would say the vast majority of the developers of these infill projects are repeat developers. So, it's not that, it's the, I just moved into the community. I bought a lot. I want to build on it. A lot of these, they're looking, seeking these lots out to be able to build infill housing. As Kevin noted, when we talk about infill, the minimum 20-foot width, I actually have a plan in my office right now. There's a lot downtown, 23 feet wide, putting a 20-foot house on it. One side's got six inches, the other side's got two and a half feet. I was like, surely, that's not going to move forward. Borders, zoning, appeals, granted, there are variants. I don't know how you build when you've got six inches to work in. We're still trying to figure out how we're going to handle that one. So, but yeah, a lot of these are folks that are very well-versed in the requirements and the law and the process.
And as you read on target with what I'm thinking, I think we need to really look at that in the future, because I think it's getting out of hand, and we need to do something about it. Also, with the infill, a lot of them there, they get above, they're not building houses with crawl spaces anymore. Everything is on a slab. So, therefore, the slab is naturally higher than the other house next door to them. So, that's creating some of the problem that I'm hearing some of our fellow councilmembers talking about because they're building on slabs. So, naturally, the ground has to be built up in order for them to build a slab. So, naturally, what that's doing, the water's going away from that. So, that, all that creates what we all have been talking about because it's not crawl spaces, it's a slab, so therefore, the house is definitely higher than the existing house that's there. So, we have some issues that we need to really take a good look at. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one more thought. I know that we need to treat everybody fairly, and I know that we need to treat everybody equally, but I do think that we should give consideration to people who have made this city their home for decades, and their families have been here for generations. Again, I know that we have to treat everybody equally, but you know, if somebody has lived here for 50 years and has been paying taxes faithfully that whole time, and now they're being negatively impacted by something that the city is approving, and I know that you have to follow the rules, I just think that we need to keep that fact in mind. A lot of this, and I've said this many, many times in my little over a year here, it may be legal, but a lot of it's not right. Thanks.
Council, any other questions or comments? I've just got a few comments. Thank you very much for your presentation and to Councilperson Butler Barlow's point and the mayor's and everybody else. Believe me, I'm very familiar with Chukutuck also, and it's like a prime example of what happens with infill development in some cases because there was, what I would call an inordinate amount of lots that became available in the Chukutuck area. And it's kind of a conundrum in that, you know, our hands are tied in a lot of ways due to property rights, due to state and federal regulations, but at the same time, I think we need to investigate not so much what we can't do, but what maybe we can do and make sure that we have done our due diligence to be able to apply whatever restrictions we can legally apply to ensure that these houses don't have a negative impact on the adjoining properties. Now, it's great that there's nice new houses going up, but a lot of these, because of the way they're developed with the elevation in particular, have serious negative impacts. So, to the extent that we can do it, just, you know, if it involves tweaking, I didn't realize the other day until I think I was, I don't know if I was talking to Kevin or the manager or something, but VC zoning has no setbacks. You know, that's kind of weird. I mean, it has no setbacks, I don't think. So, you know, maybe there are things that we do have the ability to amend, and if that's the case, then whatever we can do, regardless of how small it may be, it will be a step in the right direction. So, I very much appreciate the presentation, and hopefully, it's understood a little bit more by the citizens as far as what, what Councilman Butler Barlow said, you know, it may be legal, but sometimes it doesn't seem right. And unfortunately, the legal part of it trumps the doesn't-feel-good part of it and the impact that it's having. So, to the extent that it requires us to lobby any of our legislators, you know, when the time comes in our legislative agenda, if that's something that we need to look at it, then we can put it out there. Councilman Goldberg.
Mayor, who is going to interpret those negative effects? Who interprets that? I mean, the city staff is going to go by the book, and the state's going to go by the book.
mean, the city staff is going to go by the book and the state's going to go by the book and someone builds a lot, even downtown or wherever, who's going to be the one, is it going to be a neighbor who comes up and says, oh, it's negative, it affected me, so you can't, you have to stop it? Where, who interprets that and how you determine that it does affect it or it doesn't affect it? Who's going, who's going to interpret that? You're going to put that on staff? Is that going to be a staff deal to interpret? And then where is that going to fall? That's my only thought on that. So just wanted to share that. Thank you.
And Councilman Fawcett, I know you're still there. I lost your picture. If we could, Andy, if we could get on, Councilman Fawcett, do you have any questions or comments in regards to the infill development presentation?
None at this moment, then, Mayor. Appreciate the asking.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Oh, you got something else? I'm sorry.
Say-
Let me get you turned on, Councilboard.
What you were saying, maybe we can look at it. When is that going to happen? Because the people are still coming to us and we don't have no explanation. Councilman Goldberg said, who going to interpret it? That's a good question, because they don't even know what to interpret. What I'm saying to you is that, do we have, and you said it, do we have any rights or laws that we can say that we can do something? If the character of the community speaks for itself, our staff can look at our community and already know what's going to work and what's not going to work. So I don't, I mean, I don't know who, I'm not saying we go against the state, I'm not saying we go against somebody, but for some of these villages' hous, homes, and you got this 300-some-thousand, 500,000 house, and you got this house been there 50 years, 100 years, you know, and they have to suffer. I mean, to me, and I'm not a developer, I'm not a realtor, but they already know and they already know what's going to happen and they can prevent that while they're building the house. I mean, to me, it's like, they always going to go to the, to the, to the this much being right, being legal. And there's too many houses, homes are being affected in the villages with the same problem with the flooding of somebody else's house. A particular house paid, lady didn't pay a half a million dollars. Moved here and paying a half a million dollars on a home, and he, and they have so much land and the other developer have a little bit of land and they infringing on their, their property. And we can't explain to them who's right and who's wrong. This is real. And that's what I'm saying. I mean, who do we go to? You know, who want to spend a half a million dollars and we can't get them a answer? Or is somebody coming in infringing on your property? And we go there and say, well, you know, it looked like it. That's not, that's not the answer these people want to hear. And they look at, they look at your councilmen's, not one councilman, several councilmen's. And we go out there and we don't know, because we don't have no rules to try to affect, tell them who's right and wrong or anything stated that, well, this person is, we don't have that. So what you're saying, Mayor, yes, let's find out what can we do to try to do, not only prevent it, but see that we can put some law against it. Because what we're saying tonight, I don't hear no time limit to it. I don't hear anything. And they still, and they steady building. Thank you.
City Manager?
Um, Members of Council, you have quite a bit of conversation, and all of it seems to be circling around the VC zoning, what I'm hearing up here. And of course, as Kevin had pointed out, we have zero setbacks on that. Of course, we're in the midst of our comp plan development right now, which looks at how our, how we guide our development of our city. And maybe it's the VC zoning as we go through this process is something we look at. Maybe we look at the setbacks. Maybe we look at what is required from a utility aspect. We're talking about a couple of things. One is setback, the other one is scale. So maybe as we go through this coming year, as we deal with the comp plan, as we look at our different zonings and our neighborhoods and our fabrics, that that's the best time, maybe we take a look at this and bring something back for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I appreciate the comment. Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move to our next staff report, which is a downtown wayfinding project overview. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Mayor, Members of Council, I guarantee you this is going to be a happier note. We have with us this evening Deana Hall, our Business Development Manager, and she's going to lead us through our wayfinding, finding, uh, project. And of course, this is an update from what some of the previous briefings we've given you. Deana, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Like Al said, I'm here, hopefully, on a lighter note, to give you an update on what is going on with the downtown wayfinding initiative. However, before we get started, I did want to jump in and give you a status update on some current projects that are going on in the downtown area. The city is working on seven projects at the current time. Downtown drainage project, we've actually turned the corner going off of Saratoga onto Jackson Street. The trunk line should be finished, being laid by August. And once the BMP is complete for the library, that line will then be connected to the pond, which is slated to take place late summer, early fall. The building demolitions, contract is in place for demolition. It's likely to start at the Brandon House, so that would be demolished first and then followed by the two buildings that Parks and Recreation currently occupied. Demolition is likely to begin around the first part of June and complete by June the 20th. Oops, sorry. The Central Library, we are working towards full planned submittal this summer. The Commerce Street lot is anticipated advertising for bids within the next two weeks. HLC guidelines, staff is working on the final draft with public comment sessions to also take place this summer. The Suffolk News Herald building, this redevelopment project is actually in the final completion. However, there are a few tie-ups with Dominion Power. So once that all comes together, they will start the leasing process for that building. And then Peanut Crossing, that's under plan review for phase two of that redevelopment. As you may recall from the last update that I gave you about wayfinding, this was an initiative that was outlined in the downtown master plan. It was suggested to introduce a wayfinding and signage plan that would include placemaking and directional signs to guide both citizens and visitors to key destinations, attractions, and parking. Since we recently introduced the new downtown logo, we did want to make sure that the design reflects the elements of that. The design concept behind this project included designing five different types of signs, which include community gateway signs, vehicular directional signs, parking directional signs, parking identification signs, and then pedestrian information kiosk. Staff did work with several downtown business and property owners, as well as an internal wayfinding focus group, which included traffic engineering, parks and recreation, tourism, and planning to come up with the final design concept. In prior meetings, I have shown you the concepts as you see here with the wayfinding signs. This is the final design. After receiving feedback from the task group, there was a few minor changes that were made to the signs. We added an accent color around the P for the parking signs. We added the colorful ripple effects on the gateway signs, and the ripples do represent the color palette for the downtown logo. To keep costs down for the project, the design team did keep the poles and brackets the same, so we are able to use the current poles that are in place now. And I don't know about you, but prior to working with this project, I knew nothing about signs, like, period. So I have learned a lot through this process. A lot of them being obvious, some of them not so, not so obvious. Community gateway signs basically are used as a means to welcome motorists into an area. In this example, you can see a gateway sign that's located on Constance Road near the Hilton Garden Inn, just welcoming drivers into the downtown area. Vehicular trailblazer signs are meant to direct motorists to key destinations. These signs will be strategically located to help visitors locate popular attractions in the downtown area. Each of the, the trailblazer signs will actually have a back panel that represents something familiar and identifiable to downtown. As you see here, the Mr. Peanut silhouette. Also, these are just some examples for some of the other backs with peanuts, the Cultural Arts Center, and the Visitor Center. Parking identification signs, again, pretty straightforward. We'll have the signs that represent each of the parking lots. And also, we'll be replacing the current parking signs with the directional signs that you, that you see on the screen for just regular directional signs to parking and then our two-hour parking signs. And at this point, for those of you that are questioning why we even are talking about a wayfinding system, I thought it would be good to point out, this is the reason. Our goal is to clean up the existing sign clutter and just to have a more unified look for the downtown area. Identification kiosks used to provide information to visitors. There are two types of kiosks that, that we could go with, interactive and non-interactive, and this can be decided once we get to this phase in the project. Currently, we're 75% complete with regards to the design phase. In the next few weeks, we will be receiving a construction intent document, which will outline the areas of potential for each of the sign categories. This is just a sample of like what one of the pages would look like once we get that, that document. And once we do receive this, I do plan to sit down with Traffic Engineering just to go over all of the recommendations to see if this is, in fact, where we would want to, to place the signs. Another fun and creative way that we can introduce wayfinding is through community Here is just a, a sketch that you can use your imagination, just trying to be a little bit fun. The CSX overpass, we actually have been given approval by CSX to improve this overpass, which is located along Portsmouth Boulevard. So it's just a creative way to, to have fun with partnering and, again, just bringing everything back to the design being relative to the downtown logo, just to keep everything consistent. To close, I do want to let City Council know that this project will be a multi-phased project. Our next step will be to work with the preliminary phasing to determine what signs should be implemented first, whether it be the gateway signs, whether it be the parking signs. And with this part, whichever is selected, there will be due diligence. So we just need to make sure that we do have the permissions needed before we are able to place the signs in the approved locations. We will also be working on the budgets for the signs and also getting sign counts. And then once we receive the final construction intent document, that shows the materials and the sizes for the particular signs, then we'll be able to solicit the bids for the fabrication of the signs, as well as the installation of the signs. And as we move forward to the next steps, I'll definitely be back up here to bring you up to speed on where we are in the project.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hope. Counsel, questions or comments? Quiet group up here. This has been a long time coming. I'm excited that we're getting started with wayfaring, especially the parking signs. I've been hearing it for years and years and years. We don't have a parking problem. We have a perception that there's no place to park. So this will help. The entrance ways, I think is huge. I think when we hit the railroad tracks, people need to know that they've hit a destination. And we need to continue to invest money in that corridor to create that destination, if you will, to invite and encourage private businesses to come in and invest. I think that's what's going to take. And I think, think this is a good start. I appreciate all your effort.
Thank you.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think the consistency of the signs being out in the, the similar and directional signs, I think it's great to sort of blend them and get them right. And I've seen it in other cities and it looks very nice. So I think we're on the right track. Thank you very much for your effort.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you, Ms. Hope. Great job.
Thank you.
Presentation was very good. But I, I saw the laugh when you put up the one by the railroad over Portsmouth Boulevard.
You didn't like that?
Well, I was going to ask you, was it, they going to help pay for the pain of it? But I think that's a good sign coming into the city as a gateway will give a great brighter up part. It's bringing it, so it's be very nice with, with doing it. I just want to joke with you a little bit about that, but.
If you have any thoughts, please let me know.
I will, you know that, okay.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, Ms. Hope. Excellent, excellent job, excellent presentation. I have to piggyback off what Vice Mayor was saying about the, the train overpass. You know, that's right there by me. Love it. Great. I'm looking forward to that. I mean, everything looks great. I mean, it's a great job. Just on another note, while, while we have you here, on the other side of the railroad track, on East Washington Street, once, once you cross the railroad track, it's something I've been talking about for a while. If you can kind of give us an update as to what's going on with the light poles and the decorative lighting that we're working on between the railroad track, Liberty Street, and County Street, can you kind of give us an update on what may be happening with that, where we are with that?
I'm looking at Kevin.
Councilman Williams, just for, okay, I can give you an update.
Okay.
We're seeing communication with Dominion. So where we are, we have to purchase the pole and then schedule it within. So where we are, we have to purchase the pole, and then schedule within to install the pole. And within that, we've also got to schedule the outlets to be put in place. And so we're advancing it, but we're moving at Dominion's pace as well. And so they're kind of giving us information. But we're hopeful that we'll be up and operational by holidays.
Great, great, great. Again, thank you.
He's, he's my backup.
Council, any other questions or comments? If not, once again, thank you. Tina, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we will move, we do have one motion this evening, which is to schedule a City Council work session for Wednesday, June 1st, 2022, at 4:00 PM, unless canceled, and a motion would be in order. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Move for approval.
Motion for approval, Council Mayor Bennett and Councilman Goldberg.
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Now moved to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers? And if so, please provide the guidelines.
Each person participating under the item entitled "non-agenda speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before City Council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, use profanity, promote private business ventures. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the preceding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Tom Woodward, 227 North Main Street, representing Self regarding Suffolk Police Department.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, I come to you about a serious concern, and it should be addressed by all of you. Welcome to downtown for some of you. I want to talk about police. First, let me say, I'm not talking about fire. In some localities, fire and police are lumped together as first responders. The fire department doesn't need any help. They have a full complement. Many of their employees are making more outside the fire department than they are in because of schedules they work. I want to talk about police. Our police are stressed and strained. And what a policeman makes now, after he gets out of the academy, is ridiculously low. Maybe you all are not aware of wage inflation. A policeman would be better off managing a shift at a fast food restaurant. He risks his life. We're down 30 or 35 police. What do we do to get them? You're not going to solve it overnight. What you need to do is pay them more. Norfolk's just upped at $10,000. Chesapeake is upping it. Chesapeake's deciding how they can make officers work differently. The police officer works shift work. He can't have a second job. He doesn't have a second source of income. Why anybody would be a policeman is beyond me. Seventy-three of them died last year doing police work. I don't know how we solved the problem. You, you all can solve part of it. Who's to say we need 200 officers? Why not 225? Where'd 200 come from? Nobody likes anything more than to see a police patrol car come by his house. And if necessary, feet on the street. Now, it's not going to be a problem that's solved instantly. It's one that will be solved over time. What am I looking for? I'm looking for old-time police officer. I'm not looking for a social worker with a gun and a badge. I'm not looking for somebody who wants me to be his friend, because the best police officer is not one who's well-liked. It's one who's well-respected. That's the way it works. Now, we've had two murders, and you said it weren't in my borough. Y'all talking about Chucka Tuck? That may as well be eons away from us, downtown Suffolk. It's coming to a neighborhood near you soon. We have a long, hot summer coming up, and there are going to be more people killed. And you said, "Well, I don't know them." The people that are being dealt with are oftentimes illegitimate. They are immoral. They live by drugs, and they just soon shoot you as not. You say, "Well, I haven't done anything to them." I'm worried that I'll be collateral damage. You know, drive-by shooting, shoot it up. You think anybody's going to tell? Not one soul. All of that is good in theory, but it's not good in practice. He has a difficult job. I want a policeman who's fair, who's responsible, who enforces the law if necessary, who's reasonable in his enforcement, not one who's my friend. It's a difficult situation, but it's a serious one that needs to be addressed by you first financially. And then let's be sure how many police we do need in Suffolk. Now, I'm sure they don't need many up at Harborview, but we sure would like some more in downtown Suffolk, if you can spare them. So think about what I've said. It's not an easy situation, and one I trust you can work on. But any help you can give us, we sure would appreciate it. Thank you.
Amar Skinner, 444 North Main Street, representing Self regarding gun violence.
Thank you for having me speak. I apologize for entering up here a little early, earlier. I listened to the guy just speaking. I have to just go into my speech and kind of shake that off, because my line of work involves empirical evidence-based education on how to avoid crime, how to reduce it. And pretty much, the team of coaches that we actually have at the Certified Development Coaching Group, which is a company that I started in 2011, specializing prevention, intervention, and reentry. Now, 73 officers was killed, as he said. We don't want to see officers killed in the line of duty that's trying to clean up our community. However, if you're going to clean up the community, we want to deal with the first form of incarceration, which is mental. Before a person becomes incarcerated physically, their mind is first locked up. So I just wanted to come in here to say, don't ignore the E-Firm, the Ex-Felon Entrepreneurship Retail Museum up on the street, on North Main Street at 444. We're going to address the issues of the murders in this city. I know all these families. I started this business from the heart. I wasn't voted in leadership and asked, given money to put this museum here or to choose to use this building as a museum. This is a project that comes from empirical evidence, experience that I had with the system that I know could have been avoided. I didn't have to go through these things. So I'm asking this city to partner up with me with all the resources you got. You know, I put resources out there, but in for all them, in order for me to have a serious effect on your city and reducing crime and stopping these guys from killing one another, I need you to support what I do. On June the 4th, we're going to have a march. We're not going to interrupt the city. We're going to walk calmly up this creek from the sidewalk and from the museum to the courthouse, just bringing awareness to these guys that they need to see that somebody's concerned, that's come from their peers, that's concerned with these murders, that care about these innocent kids, these innocent people, whether kids are young adults being killed. And the kids that they're leaving behind has to be raised by people that's pretty much usually don't have empathy for kids that's not their biological kids. So therefore, you got another generation that's going to come up and do the same thing. It has to be intervened, and just locking them up is not the solution. I understand that what's done is done. You got to correct the problems already done. I'm talking about the problems that's coming that can be avoided. If you serious about leading the city and helping avoid crime, please connect with me. I'm not a bad person. When you see me with my chains on in the streets, out here in front of my museum and stuff, don't judge me, because that's part of my uniform. That's why they talk to me. I don't always wear a suit. I look like them. And they want to know, how can I look like them and do what I do? It's attractive. It's part of marketing. It's part of getting them to come to me and listen to what I have to say. I'm not going to give them nothing, no drugs, no guns, or nothing to go kill each other. I'm going to give them education to help elevate their lives. Anything you can do to help me, I'm asking you to help me. That's all. Can you help me? If you want to contact me, you can contact me at 444 North Main Street. You can contact me at my office, 757-484-3000. Their answer as Brea Healthcare, that's one of my companies. I have several businesses that I use to try to teach entrepreneurship through, even now to trucking companies, to try to get these guys that's coming home, that's been through this stuff, to actually become coaches. That museum has a Breaking Out of the Box tour. It's called Breaking Out of the Box of Unawareness. And it's breaking them out of the box of how to actually promote their own safety. You know, they have to be the first line of police for themselves. If they police themselves, they police their own communities. And you don't have to come over there and, you know what I'm saying, witness the stuff that you're witnessing. Victim impact studies and training is real. They need to see the aftermath of the bodies that they killed. They need to see it before it happened, and it can avoid a lot of it. But you got to care about that. I don't need nobody money. I know entrepreneurship, but I do know that this is not my job alone. I want a police that's a friend. I want a police that can talk to me. I don't want a police that I feel like I got to run from, or I can't stop if he put his lights on, because he might shoot me. So I need a police that has some empathy. I need one that understands my community. I need one that's first concerned about success and not money, because success comes before money. Money is not real success. I had money a long time. It don't make you happy all the time. I'm telling you, success, a lot of people get money and don't have it after they have it, because they're not really successful. Success is a state of mind, man. And the only problem with these kids out here, young adults, they don't know how to think, man. They not thinking. They wasn't taught to think. They was taught to do the totally opposite. It's self-destruction, man. But it can be saved, but I need your help. I don't know how long I got. I ain't count time, five minutes and all that.
That concludes your time, sir.
Yes, thank you.
The next speaker is Carolyn White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville.
I'm Carolyn White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue in City Suffolk, Pewsville, Virginia. Tonight, I want to bring another word to you all. It's called usurp. And I got the Webster's Dictionary for usurp, in case somebody didn't know. It says, "To take and hold by force or without right another's power or position." Now, Ms. Brandy came up here two council meetings back to back. She asked somebody to give her some information or to ask the commissioner, special commissioner, excuse me, to come here and explain his job duties and what have you. And tonight, since you all hadn't said anything to her, nobody's replied to her, we haven't heard from him, so I'm here to tell you a few things about him, okay? All right. Last Friday, we were at the treasurer's office, and Ms. Parker was out, so nobody could help us but Ms. Parker. What if Ms. Parker had died at home Friday morning? Nobody could take her cases? I worked in the Department of Social Service for 32 years. When I left my desk each night, there was a note on every case. So if I didn't make it, somebody could step in, look at that case, and handle it. If a person came in and said, "I need to see Mrs. Epps," at that time, all they had to do, go into my office, grab that case, and tell that person what was needed. Why we don't have that in Suffolk? Did you all forget? Everybody is expendable, okay? Everybody can die, right? Okay. Another thing, he is the super or the special commissioner. We have a commissioner, Ms. Draper. What is her position? She not special? I thought she was special. You all elected her. So she's a hometown girl? Went to Forest Glen High School? I got the information. It's right on the internet. You all have computers. Look her up. And all the credentials here seem to be she is a special person. Okay. So, the commissioner does foreclosures, the special commissioner is doing foreclosures. He's doing a number of them in Pewsville, and that's why we went to his office. I went to the back door. Ms. Brandy went to the front door, so he wouldn't get away like he did the prior times when she went to speak with him. So if he's under you all, I don't see it written in the ordinances. It's not written on the computer. So who's paying him? Are you slipping money under the table to him? But I know he get his fill, because every case that goes from Pewsville that he forecloses is tacked on $4,000 more to what the person owe. I know it, because we handled one. We handled three, as a matter of fact. In 2019 was when I started checking on him, because a young lady came to the Civic League, and she told us she was paying her monies automatically through her credit union, but it wasn't being credited. So where is that money going? We found out that money was put in a trust fund by the special commissioner. So I'm telling you all, you got all these little secret things going on. The regular commissioner didn't even notice. So I'm telling you, the longer you all wait, and I had to keep coming up here waiting for the drainage to get done, because once that done, I can go home, sit down, and be happy. But until then, I'm finding information. I found that information about him from 2001. Look it up, because I'm not going to tell you, okay? But it's coming, because you all said, y'all can't handle it. Y'all can't look at these ordinance and change them. But guess what? Every time I go to a meeting, every time I go to a Zoom, I'm informing somebody over you all, because you all don't want to take the time to look at what's going on. Just like with the lady's house, again, I'm going to bring that up, because she's been there 40 years, and you saying you don't want to take anybody away from their land that's been in a house 40 years. The house might not look like a $6530, $635,000 home, mind you, make note. And you might not be able to buy a $430,000 home and come back to Suffolk. But you can look at, this lady has a home and a daughter, and she's trying to live like everybody else. And you talk about stormwater and drainage? Thank you, girlfriend, you did it. Yeah, you did it. Because they keep saying, "There's no solution." Piping is the solution. We have a man now piping the master drainage plan from 2016, because everything was going to John Street. Guess why? Because the outfalls there from the interstate. So that was an easy fix, because now they don't have to pay to get that outfall. Vida did it. Aren't they special? They're just as special as they can be. I got some more things to talk about, but I know my time's probably up.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that. But hey, I just want you all to pay attention, because I am, and I'm reporting as I go, because nobody's talking to us. Thank you.
Pamela Brandy, 1516 Pearl Str, 5016 Pearl Street, Chesapeake, Virginia, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville redistricting.
To continue point two from what Carolyn left off, she is absolutely correct. I have asked more than one time
I have asked more than one time to have the commissioner to come and speak and to answer questions about the elderly in Pewsville and those that own property. And as a Pewsville Civic League leader, vice president of Pewsville that is combined of Chesapeake and Suffolk, you should give me the courtesy of responding to me. And I have not had that, and I am still waiting. There's a lot of issues and concerns that we have. One is from all that has been said today. We talked, you all talked about the tropical subjects, tanks, and you said that there's not too much that y'all can do at all about it. Well, Pewsville residents was denied permits for years because of high water tables, flat land, the city called it, non-tropical subjects are in all of the African-American community. The tropical subject system was a viable, viable in Suffolk in 1971 Perth Health Department in Richmond. Now with the flat ground, you allow developers to use these never telling the previous owners that they could use this system. The Suffolk Health Department refused to let residents build. It is amazing how last, last council meeting, you all spoke of certain things that had just slipped, by the way. And then it was said early today that you have three parts of how the water flow on and off of property. But first of all, three is the Father, Son and the Holy Ghost. And this not new. Every time you put a shovel in the ground and pull up dirt, you altered the natural flow path of it. Back in the day, when it was just little old, you know, free African-American slaves that had Pewsville, water ran through Pewsville nicely with no problem at all, just like Chukka Tuck, Oakland, all those areas back there. But the problem is that you're allowing builders to build on, build and raise up the ground level next to these homes. Plots back then was that you had to buy two lots to put one home on. Now you're not doing that, so you know, we hear that you have to follow the state laws and everything. What about following your own ordinance? And you know, every time a new council board is created, you all get to make rules and change policy according to what is viable in the community and what's going on today? And you act like you don't know how to do that? Unsatisfying at all, altogether. And I do agree with you very much so, is that what are we gonna do about the people that have been paying years here that built the community? And you act like all this rapid growth and development because they are coming in and you have, cuz I see all the time, y'all trucks driving around checking out what's going on in the community, but y'all can't see what's going on? You don't know where Paper Street is, don't know where they at or how many you actually have, but we can count better than you all? But you haven't sat down and had a conversation with us to find out? And the facts are the facts. They not gonna change. But you all need to change because you all were voted in and you took an oath, not only to man, but to God, that you would do what's in the best interest of God's people, all of us, and to manage our community and our money accordingly and properly. And we like to see the transparency on that. And when we look around, a lot of the city permits and offices and all, and we listen to our elderly and residents of all ages, that's not so. We're paying for things that we do not receive benefits for. And I'd like to know, maybe you can answer this question, in Pewsville, all of the homes that are being built, they're not looking like what everything else look like cuz we have beach homes now in Pewsville, okay? But how many of those are only being sold and built for military people? What about the residents that live there or anyone else owning those homes? I'd like to get an answer on that. But most important, I'd like to give you all one last statement on this. You all say you can't find the reason why and it taking so much time? Well, guess what? We paid for some of y'all to hold certain positions. That's your job. I'd like for you to see it. But I thank you and I believe you deserve it. Not only do we see it, but the good Lord see it. You don't ask it us, you all ask it Him. Be blessed.
Kelly Hangler, 9345 Eclipse Drive, representing the Cretton Eclipse Hobson Heritage Civic League regarding Article One, Section Three of the Virginia Constitution and the Comprehensive Plan.
Good evening. I only have my readers, so if I don't make eye contact, I'm sorry, I can't see you. Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Councilman, Councilwoman, Councilmember. Shelley, we're gonna get this right before much longer. My name's Kelly Hangler and we are at two years and six months. Two years and six months ago, our shareholders throughout the 23433 went door knocking. And they went to all the doors because what we had discovered two years and six months ago plus was that the entirety of the rural residential conservation district down to Hobson had somehow been jumped the river from Harborview and included in the Northern Growth Area. I'm gonna read something to you briefly to follow upon what we did before, and I'm gonna point to you that of record, November 20th, 2019, we did receive a letter from Patrick Roberts, city manager, which was not the person who should have responded because what was brought before this legislature is a legislative act by the people called a petition, and it had no business with the executive branch addressing it, which is what I'm gonna bring your attention to. Under the Article One Bill of Rights, a declaration of rights by the good people of Virginia and exercise of their sovereign powers, which rights do pertain to them and their prosperity and as the basis of the foundation of government. Section one is equality and rights of men, all persons. Section two, people, the source of power. That all power is vested and consequently derived from the people that magistrates and their trustees and servants at all times amenable to them. Section three, government instituted for common benefit. The government is, that government is or ought to be instituted for the common benefit, protection and security of the people, nation, community of all the various modes and forms of government that is best, which is capable of producing the greatest degree of happiness and safety, the greatest degree, not the most minimum, and is most effectively secured against the danger of maladministration. We have a separation of powers that is very clear to persons when it comes to the federal and state government, but we here at this level also have a judiciary, a legislative and an executive. What we have, my friends, is a conflation of issues, okay? These powers must be separate and sacrosanct. You don't see the judges coming down here trying to tell council what to do. But what we do have on a constant basis, based on this November letter, is that we requested a petition. And the response that was given back by the city manager, once again, was a response given by the city manager, which was unintelligible, okay? Because the comprehensive plan that we had, none of us been included in, in the greatest landmass city in all of Virginia, has existing communities, and each of those existing communities has a village initiative or a neighborhood plan that was done 20 years ago. And to answer the question about continuously ripping the Band-Aid off of quote unquote historic villages, okay, under Village VC, Village VC is a UDO term. This city, I brought to your attention how many times, does not have a historic commission. Therefore, there is no braking system on your planning. Once again, there's no brake system on your planning. VC means that you should be looking as village center style in the modern day, okay? Somehow we've attached historic village of Holland and Whaleyville and Chukka Tuck in Oakland to a mass migration of houses that are in a submarket, and I'm ex-military and I love my military, but come on, people. Do you know that almost every one of these houses is being occupied by active duty military and then rebought and resold to active duty military? If we have a need for our military, we wanna hear about it. But poor Mr. Jones, okay, please, please, please get a somebody in here to do a special piece, spend our tax dollar to do it because they've turned Wren into a mill pond? Because, thank you, Vice Mayor Bennett, what we have done is build houses up on concrete slabs cuz it's cheaper, quote unquote. Our growth in this city, the actual UDO, is based off of providing services, capacity building, okay, and then the homes. So yes, we have coastal zone management. We have coastal resilience. We have flooding. We have many, many pieces. But what I keep hearing, I'm sorry, right, is that our legislative ask to our legislative body, which is our council, is being superseded by administration, which is not the Constitution of Virginia. We need to come straight, and we need to come correct. And you're gonna have all the hundreds of thousands of hours that our community has put into just this? That's worth $27 an hour, by the way, if we were to get grant funding, right? Directed into anything you wish. Please redirect. Please reconnect with the people. And please, my God, for this country, bless it and get right with the Constitution. Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening is Wallace Johnson, 2086 Nansman Parkway, representing self regarding city violence.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor Bennett, and to the entire city council, and to our precious Police Chief Chandler. Just wanted to stop by and say tonight that we are praying much for you and with you what's going on in our city. I was traveling home the other day, and it was a major storm. It was raining, thundering and lightning. And stopped at the gas station. Few minutes, I looked up, and what did I see? A beautiful rainbow hovering over our city. And what that told me was that storm had passed over. I come to say to city council tonight, even though we in the midst of a storm of violence, it too will pass. I remember when Jesus had gotten tired and said to his disciples, "Let's go over on the other side where there was to be peace." And while they was traveling on the sea, he was below deck asleep. And there rose another great storm. Somebody, one of the disciples went down and woke him up and said, "Carth thou not that we perish." The Bible said he got up, stood on the deck, and spoke out and said, "Peace be still." And everything became calm. When we pray together, things will get calm. Nothing good comes until we are all together. The Spirit of the Lord did not fall on the day of Pentecost until they had got in one place, and they were all together. I say to this council tonight and to the city of Suffolk, there are those of us that are praying that God would send peace and calm into our cities, not only just in Suffolk, but across this nation, across this land. I've been coming down here for quite some time, and tonight is the first time that I been able to stand here and not be nervous. And the reason I'm not nervous is because there's a peace of calmness in me, that I know that in spite of what you're facing, Chief Chandler, there will be peace and there will be calmness. Our prayers are for the families that are losing their loved ones. You all have a difficult job. I don't know if I could walk behind a building and see some young man's brains blowed out of his head. That's not easy. But we are praying for you, and we are praying for this city. And we want the parents to know that we are praying for them as well. God bless you and heaven smile upon you.
That concludes the speakers, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clark. At this time, we'll move to new business. Madam Clark, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
We have one item for consideration this evening, a motion to nominate and appoint Mary Best to the Community Policy and Management Team as the parent representative.
Here we have a motion would be in order at this time. Vice Mayor Bennett?
So move.
Got a motion for approval, Vice Mayor Bennett and Councilman Williams.
Move to approve.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg. Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Williams. Vice Mayor Bennett. Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
At this time, are there, is there any new business items that require the action of city council for consideration? Councilman Fawcett, do you have anything that you would like to bring up under new business?
No, Mayor, thank you.
All right. We'll now move to announcements and comments. And at this time, I'll ask if meeting Community Relations Director Tim Kelly has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Well, we have several awards that have been recently presented, there we go, presented to members of the Suffolk Fire and Rescue Department. We start with Fire Chief Michael Baraki, who was selected by the Tidewater EMS Council to be the recipient of the 2022 RC Daily Excellence in Emergency Medical Services Award. The award was presented at the 2022 Tidewater Regional EMS Awards Dinner that was held on Saturday, May 14th. This prestigious award is given to an individual who displays a commitment to a comprehensive integrated system of emergency medical services throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. As a pediatric critical care paramedic for the Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters Transport Team, Chief Baraki understands the necessity to constantly improve Virginia's EMS system in innovative and unconventional ways. And since taking the reins of Suffolk Fire and Rescue, Chief Baraki immediately got to work, putting the department on the map to bring the skills of his dedicated EMS providers to the region and the state. This effort led to the development and expansion of several programs, notably Suffolk's Marine Response Team, Tactical Medical Medic Team, and its participation in one of Virginia's two urban search and rescue teams. In January 2022, Suffolk Fire and Rescue named their firefighter, paramedic and Officer of the Year. On Monday, May 16th, the three individuals were honored again by the Pilot Club of Suffolk at their civic awards night. Master firefighter Bryant Dodson was recognized as Paramedic of the Year. Master firefighter Charles Mullen as Firefighter of the Year. And Acting Battalion Chief Keith Johnson as Officer of the Year. Pilot Club of Suffolk also recognized the Suffolk Police Department's Officer of the Year, Master Police Officer Detective Shelley Cosiana as Police Officer of the Year. Congratulations to all our public safety personnel for the honors from the Pilot Club. Suffolk City Manager Albert Moore appointed Kevin Wine as Interim Director of Planning and Community Development effective May 7th this year. Kevin has been with the city of Suffolk since 2016 and served as a principal planner and the current planning manager before being named interim Assistant Director of Planning in November 2021, and then Assistant Director of Planning in March of this year. Building Resilient Solutions, or BRS, a flood mitigation company providing retrofit designs for existing and historic buildings experiencing repetitive flooding and flood damage, had a ribbon cutting last week at their location at 147 North Main Street. Established in 2018 as a joint venture between Commonwealth Preservation Group and Museum Resources Construction and Millwork, BRS researches the history of a property, diagnoses existing problems, provides treatment recommendations and develops a retrofit solution. The company specializes in retrofit designs for pre-1970s era construction and historic structures that are unable to be elevated or relocated. The Public Works Department is hosting a free interactive event for kids of all ages in celebration of National Public Works Week, about to touch, feel and climb into the driver's seat of some of the coolest vehicles that they've got. The event will be held at the North Suffolk Library from 12 until 3 on Friday, May the 20th. Again, with Public Works, they advised at a transportation project to replace the bridge over King's Cell Swamp on Elwood Road, and Route 613 is underway. Preliminary activities began on April 25th, and the road will be closed on June 6th. Sinage will be posted in advance of the closure date. The bridge is anticipated to be reopened for traffic in spring of 2023. Staff will continue to keep the public informed about the product. Staff will continue to keep the public informed about the project progress during construction. Well, mosquitoes are back and so are mosquito ducks. Suffolk Mosquito Control is making the dunks available at various locations across the city, including fire stations, the Suffolk Recreation Center, the Curtis R. Military Senior Recreation Center, Suffolk Public Library locations, the Media and Community Relations Department here at Suffolk City Hall, and the Mosquito Control Office. Each household can receive one packet of dunks per month for free. Keep Suffolk Beautiful will be a proud participant in the 33rd Annual Clean the Bay Day, a regional waterway and shoreline litter cleanup sponsored by the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. Three cleanups will take place in Suffolk on Saturday, June 4th from 9 until noon. And all, and the three locations will be Constance Wharf Park and Marina, the Lake Prince Boat Ramp, and the Western Branch Boat Ramp. This is a water-centric cleanup event. Land-based volunteers are vital, though, to keeping the watershed clean. Those who intend to clean for the waterways must provide their own kayaks and canoes. Other litter collecting equipment will be provided to all participants. Residents are also able to organize their own cleanups, which Keep Suffolk Beautiful will help supply. Interested individuals and groups are encouraged to register online at cbf.org/clean. For more information, you can contact Suffolk Litter Control for all the details. Suffolk City Offices will be closed on Monday, May 30th for the Memorial Day holiday. There will be no change in trash or recycling collection for that week. Normal operations will resume on Tuesday, May 31st. And we've been, of course, reminding you for quite some time, and we'll keep doing so, that again, if you want to get vaccination information, you can visit vaccinatevirginia.gov or contact the State Call Center to find out a vaccination location convenient to you. And again, we leave you with the ways to reach out to our residents and business owners. The number in the upper left-hand portion of your screen, 514-4000. You want to get connected with city services or want to talk to city staff who can answer questions or give you direction, we're there to help. With that, I say good evening to all.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We will now move on to announcements from City Council. And we're going to start with Councilperson Butler Barlow. Get you turned on there. Boom, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. First of all, I want to say thanks to Mr. Wine and to Mr. Lewis for their presentation. I really appreciate it. We obviously have work that maybe we can do and I hope that we can work together to find some solutions. Again, I know that you all are trying your best and I really appreciate it. I think we can all partner together and find some ways to improve some things. So appreciate that. Appreciate all the staff presentations tonight. Appreciate being kept informed. I want to talk about the update to the comprehensive plan. If you haven't been to the website, we talked about it earlier. It's Suffolk2045.org. If you have a problem or concern, a recommendation, a question, this is your chance. This is an exciting time. Everybody gets to have their say. And I feel like this is just an excellent opportunity for everybody to tell us what you're thinking. It's a great opportunity to have some influence on the way that the city is going. And I hope that everyone will take that opportunity. Again, Suffolk2045.org, here's your chance. And as always, I, it's planting season. There are many, many pieces of equipment out on the road. We had about 10 days of bad weather and now everybody is rushing to catch up. So please take your time. If you're behind a tractor, it's going to be turning off soon. Everybody be careful and safe and enjoy the beautiful weather. With that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
Like I used to ditto all the time. I could just ditto what Councilwoman Barlow just said and cover everything. But just want to make a comment tonight with the speakers that spoke to us, part of the speakers anyway. Seems to be an underlying theme going around here that we've got a lot of violence going on in the world. And we've got three different approaches to dealing with this violence. One, Mr. Woodward wants to hire more policemen, don't disagree. We've got a young man that wants to approach it from the street, Amar. And he's not wrong either. But what we really need to do is we all need to work with our police department, with Chief Chandler, and come to a solution that will work for our community. I dare say this is all over the country, but this is our community. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to make a difference just by working through all of our systems and all of us nearby be a part of it. So with that, I'll say thank you for coming. It was, it was a good meeting, good night, and we'll see you next time. Thanks.
At this time, I'm going to ask Councilman Fawcett if he has any announcements or comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. One, I want to thank the council for supporting me tonight to do this remote. It's helped me immensely. Also, I'd like to just congratulate the Public Safety Fire Police for those awards. One of the most killer EMS systems in the state, right here in our backyard in Suffolk. For all the presentations tonight, I've been kind of laid back, a little bit quiet. Thank to all the folks that came up and gave presentations tonight. I really appreciate it, for those people that came out and spoke. I hope you all have a good weekend. I hope to see you in a future meeting. Thank you.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. First, first I'd like to comment on the fact that we did have three shootings over the past week, two of which was fatal. My heart and prayers goes out to those families. I don't know what the answer is. But we must somehow collectively get control over the violence that's plaguing our neighborhoods and our streets. We have an excellent police department, Chief Chandler. But again, I need to stress this. It's going to take everyone collectively to combat this problem that we're having. So, you know, if you see something going on, speak up. Let's talk about it. As long as the violence continues to plague our streets and the people in the neighborhoods are not speaking up, we can't get any control of it. So again, please speak up. Speak up. Speak up, speak up. On Saturday, May the 14th, I attended the 24th Annual 200-plus Scholars Breakfast at the Virginia Beach Convention Center. The organization honored 766 young black men from high schools throughout the Tidewater area. 766 gentlemen they honored. It was amazing. I'm telling you, it was amazing and amazing event. And I'm looking forward to next year. I am looking forward to next year. Also, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Elizabeth Epps, I'm sorry, Ms. Elizabeth Green. I'm sorry, Ms. Green, of Kids Write for Kids Incorporated. She received a mini-grant and was able to give 25 Suffolk Elementary School students gift certificates for their M L K writing project. The kids' writings are on display now at the Morgan Memorial Library. So if you want to go to the library and take a look at what the kids wrote and what they received their certificates based on, please go out, take a look. Mr. City Manager, if I could please get an update on the slowed-down kids' plant signs for the 3 and 400 block of Brook Avenue and Marek Avenue, that would be greatly appreciated. My word for the month of May is appreciation. Recognition and enjoyment of the good qualities of someone or something. To the citizens in the Wellaville borough, I want to hear from you. My information again is on the city website. Not only my information there, but all your elected officials' information is there, my fellow council members. So please go on the internet, onto the website, and get our information and reach out to us. We want to hear from you. And I feel comfortable speaking for everybody up here. We want to hear from you. And with that, I'd like to say good night. God bless.
Councilman Goldberg.
Was able to go to the Pilot Club meeting the other night, the ceremony. And they honored a lot of people and it was the fire police and others, some bus drivers and bus aides and things of that nature. And I thought it was just an excellent program to have these individuals to be recognized by members of our community. Our fire department, our police department just do an excellent job. And I'm glad to see that they are appreciated out there. And today I was able to be with the memorial service that was there today, which was a sombering service, but it was a very nice service to speak about our, our lost police officers, but they will never be forgotten. And I think that's very important on that. Since we're talking about the, the crime and things of that nature in the city, there, there exist some reasons for that and we need to hunt them down and reach into them. The police cannot do it all. They have to be reactive to what goes on. But we do know that the, that individuals in the city, in those communities, it might be a parent, it might be a cousin, it might be anything. They know what's going on. They need to speak up and speak out, as Councilman Williams said. Sometimes they're afraid. They've been threatened by these groups and individuals out there that are threatening them, saying, "If you tell, we're going to get you." And then they're afraid, especially the older people are afraid. We have to find a way to get those individuals to speak out, protect them in that way so that we then maybe can get at the root of some of this. Because we are having a little more of this than we, than we should in our community, more than I've ever seen. But I think it's across the country. We've seen a lot of craziness going across. But we need to work together with that and to find, find answers for it. And Chief, I appreciate your effort in doing everything that you can and with your team of doing the best you can at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Ward.
Yes, I also like to thank Mr. Wine and Mr. Lewis for the information and presentation that we have tonight. It's so important for City Council to have a direction that we can tell the community. Like I said, we just don't know right now. So what we do tell them, we don't have no rules. They don't have no rules. And it affects the old village and the people that, who buy new homes, who are, who are not developers. And so when you see that and don't have no answer, it, it, it does something to you. Because you're trying to do the best you can. And we know the city's tried also. Just want to know some information that what we could tell them. I also attend the 200-plus men event. And like Mr. Williams said, 760, but it was a group that got me going back in the day. I was in a group about 15 years ago. And it was the, started as the first of the first men's in Hampton Roads. Saw it way a while back. And they was always doing good things and the scholarship program that they take a lot of pride in. And like Mr. Williams said, it got me probably become a member again, attend them. I haven't attended in a while, but it's so great to see young African-American men being honored for the 3.0 or better, getting scholarships. So that's important, that's so, so leadership. And one of the, we sat at a table, Mr. Williams at first and Councilman Bennett came. And the lady was so happy and rejoiced to see that she was sitting next to two councilmen. And then Mr. Williams saw her smiling and telling her we're honored to be next to her. Come to find out that she had two grandsons who received the awards. One is becoming a doctor this year and one is attending, got a scholarship already. And then another one's getting one Saturday. But one of the things that hit me mostly, Mr. Williams, was the lady's like 70 years old. And she said to us that she got encouraged to go back to school and get her degree after her daughter got hers. And as a matter of fact, I don't know her daughter's name, but she do work in Suffolk. And the lady's name is Elder Hattie Williams. And me and Mr. Williams said, "We proud of you." So it was, it was one of the best times I had sitting at a table that we, we talked a lot and we were very impressed with her. And it's hard work to have your kids and your grandkids being honored for academics. So that was, we had a good time. It was a real good time, very impressive. And I want to also give my condolences to the people of our city of Suffolk. I know we probably, they won't know, but also the people in Buffalo, New York, and also some of the people in California. And I just include the whole nation. We're in a time that is real serious. For whatever reason, it's going on, it go deeper than what we hear on TV. And whatever reason, people are doing it, it's not only just working together. We got to create something and take their mind off and give them hope. They can be better than what they might think they can be. We need help. They had to do it. The young man came here and said he need help. So maybe that's a start for the city to look and see what he's about. If he has some type of idea to stir the young generation in another direction, it's, it's worth looking at or investigating. So we give them an opportunity. Like I said, it's a rough time now and nobody have the solution, trust me. You can say what you want, but any one thing going to stop what's going on. Prayer works, but we got to work together and be in one accord. Even try to start something. You got to start from somewhere. With that, I'll say God bless.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, thank you, sir. I would just like to start out by saying thanks to quite a few projects that Mr. Lewis and his team have got on for me. And I think, I'm sure, I know the people are really appreciative. For that, I'll start out with the East Suffolk Garden one where, and it was having a lot of concerns and problems at 6th Street and Truman Road where the four-way stop. They still trying to get used to it. They say that some people are still, don't realize this day, even though the warning sign is there. So maybe sooner or later, they're, everybody be full aware of the four-way stop sign. And they also would like, Mr. Manager, have sort of a suite over in that neighborhood for grass cutting and enough for cars. They would like to have that taken a look at as well. Nansman Parkway, Mr. Blair, they worked that and it's smooth out there now again, where we can keep our front end in line pretty good there on Nansman Parkway. And I do appreciate that. And sidewalks on Portion Boulevard, it's just about finished. It's closed, but it's been a long time coming. But I think that's, it's very appreciated. I see a lot of people are using that already, the parts that's open. And hoping that that will be connecting them to the trail so they can go right on over there and get the exercise time in. Also, in Suffolk Meadows area, I appreciate you taking a look at the four-way stop sign there at Byron Avenue, Byron Boulevard and Suffolk Meadows. With the amount of traffic that's going through there, they definitely need to try to slow it down a little bit. That's one way of trying to slow that traffic down. And with the work that's going to be done on Shoulders Hill Road there with putting the pipe across for the new development going across where the coal storage buildings will be going, that's going to create some problem there for them. So we'd like to keep them informed of when that will be because they're expecting a whole lot more traffic probably be coming through that neighborhood as well during that period of time. And I'm hoping that that will not take too long for completion of that. And I'm hoping that that will not take too long for completion of that. I would also like to say that I did attend, as has been stated, the 200 men plus breakfast. And I tell you, it was a great turnout, and it's very good to see the impact that they are having on so many young men, African-American men. And I tell you, it just does my heart good to see them taking an interest in the young men. And I think that's the thing we all have to do, is start looking at our young people when they are young, not wait until they get older to try to correct them. As I was talking to someone, and I said, "Just like I used to hear my ancestors say, you know, you can bend a small tree, but when it get big, you're not gonna bend them. You might break them, but you're not gonna bend them that easy." So we need to start with our kids when they are very, very young. Also, I'd like to recognize the churches that had a prayer video tonight about the violence in Suffolk, and that's Metropolitan Baptist Church, Baum East, Baum South, Mount Joy Full for Living, Rising St. James, and Living Waters Christian Church in Piney Grove. They all were getting together this afternoon to do a prayer video about the violence and things that's going on in our community, and not only in our community, but the whole nation. And I don't want anyone to look at Suffolk. I know it's more than we have been getting reported and seeing, but it's happening everywhere. It's not just happening in Suffolk. And police cannot be on every corner and walking with every person who walk up and down the street. We have to be the eyes and ears to help them and be there for them. And if we see something, we should say something. And I know a lot of times we say, "Well, I see it, but I'm not gonna say anything, I'm afraid." But it's a way that you can do that without them even knowing who you are that's making the report. I think you need to pick the phone up. If you don't want them, you can just tell them, "No, don't tell them who I am, don't come to my house," and all that. And I'm sure that that will happen, because I know that's the process the way it has been. So I hope people, I know they are afraid, but if you start letting people take your neighborhood from you, they will end up running the ones that's been there out of there. So you need to really see something coming up in your neighborhood. If it's not good, that's what the police are there for, to try to help you to stop that before it get out of hand. Also, I would like to say that my friend, I was at the memorial service today for the fallen police officer, and I had to tell Sergeant Rivera, wife, he was a person that every time I saw him, regardless of where I was at, he had that big hug, that Marine hug and a big slap. And he was a real, real friend, and I thoroughly have missed him. And I still have prayers in for his family. And let me see, is there anything else that I have? At the next meeting, I just mentioned to the mayor that I have a motion that I would like to make, that I brought up last council meeting, about Dr. L.D. Britt with naming this human service building after him. So I will bring that up at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. It's been a rather busy two weeks. Right after our council meeting, two weeks ago, we had the prayer breakfast at 7:30 in the morning, which kinda hurts on the sleep, but it was a great event. It was very well-attended. Lieutenant Governor Winsome Sears was one of the speakers, very motivating, very inspirational to listen to her story. And her story exemplifies what our country's about. You know, you just gotta listen to her speak, and her parents being Jamaican immigrants, I believe, and coming to this country, and she is now the lieutenant governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia. So quite a story. The Chamber of Commerce had their Small Business of the Year Award. I knew the manager was there and some staff as well, and Jennifer Groves of Embroidery, etc., was selected as the Suffolk winner of their Small Business of the Year Award, and I congratulate her. I've known her from the time she opened her doors. And they're self-made, they worked very hard to get where they are, and it was well-deserved. The next day, I was at OBC Hospital at 7 o'clock in the morning to offer a proclamation in recognition of Nurses Month. You know, the folks that are nurses, they're, we recognize a lot of individuals that are not, you know, they're not jobs, they're, it's a passion, it's a calling to be a nurse is that. I go to the hospital doing therapy dog stuff when I can, and it's amazing to watch how they interact with their patients and what they do every day. And they had a big crowd, and I was also met the new president of OBC, Mr. Joe Masterson, very, very nice individual, and he is, as Centerra normally has in the past, I mean, he is very interested in being involved in the community and doing what he can in partnering with us, and I look forward to him being here for a long time. Then we had the mayor's forum, talking about violence. We had the mayor's forum on the same day. The manager and I rode over to Greenbrier. All the Hampton Roads mayors were in attendance, with the exception of one, because lots of times you just can't get there. It's not that it's not an issue. And at this meeting, the city manager from Norfolk, Chip Fowler, and the city manager from Hampton, you gonna help me with the name?
Mary Bunting.
Mary Bunting, that's why I guess with me can remember the names. They had been working diligently for over a month to try to put a plan together. And they brought some very, very, very pertinent information to the forefront. And I'll just leave it at that. And we're gonna talk about violence a little bit more in a minute. Let me just go through what else, you know, has happened over the last couple of weeks. Good stuff, a lot of good stuff. We're gonna remember, there's a lot of good things going on in this city. I don't want this to be totally Debbie Downer. We have got, you know, compared to a lot of other locations and where we are, we are in, I know it's never good, the loss of one life is one life too many. We can't just say that doesn't count. But compared to a lot of other localities, because I speak to other mayors as to what's going on, we are currently in a rather enviable position in comparison. So we have to put everything in perspective, and I'm not making light of anything that's happened, not one little iota. But like I say, we'll talk about that a little bit more. We had a ribbon cutting for Building Resilient Solutions right here on Main Street. They do flood and water mitigation. And they're also a very interesting, I wanna put this out there, because we talk about our historic district and lots of times, we have folks coming to us, and it's an issue whether we use new material, old material. One of the things they specialize in is they will look at your house if you have issues with it, and they will do a cost analysis, if you will, and determine whether it's worthwhile to keep the original material. And they're telling me lots of times, you can keep the original material, and it's not gonna cost as much as replacing it with something else. So that's what they're telling me. But it's right here in our city, and of course, they do work all through Hampton Roads. Councilman Goldberg spoke about the Pilot Club and their civic awards night. I appreciate the Pilot Club very much, putting, you know, having that event honoring those that serve our community. And I love our firefighters, I love our police officers. But in addition to recognizing our Police Officer of the Year, Paramedics of the Year, Firefighter of the Year, Community Professional, they also recognized the Special Education Bus Driver of the Year, the Special Education Bus Aid of the Year, the Special Education Teacher of the Year, the Special Education Paraprofessional of the Year, and the Anchor of the Year. And lots of times, you know, we forget about these folks, just like the nurses, that give of themselves, not just for the pay, and the work they do, they do it from the heart. And it makes all the difference in the world. And I was absolutely, I didn't have, I didn't know who they were gonna recognize, they just, Leah Powell told me to show up, so I showed up. And I think Leah has a video of me about 20 years ago participating in a womanless beauty pageant for the Ananzenman Pilot Club, where I was dressed in tights and a red and white check dress trying to clog with my daughter-in-law. She swears she has this. So when she tells me to go someplace, I show up. That's how it works, and she keeps that in the safe somewhere. I went to the Cove this morning out in northern Suffolk, and for those of you don't know what the Cove is, it's an emergency veterinary service that opened up 10 years ago, that was the first one in our city that's over in northern Suffolk. They do an outstanding job. I told them I was delighted to be here this morning, and more delighted to be there this morning than I didn't have a dog with me that needed their services, because I have been there before. And you have a pet at 5 o'clock in the morning on a Sunday, or 1 o'clock at midnight on a Saturday, that's a place to go. And before, the only choice that we had that I know of would had, you would've had to go into Greenbrier for that type. And they just get a well-run operation every time I've ever gone there. They're professional, they're compassionate, and they get the job done, and they are elated with the city of Suffolk. They are just tickled to death that they're here in our city. Chief Baraki, he left on me, but I wanna congratulate him on receiving the 2022 R.C. Daily Excellence Emergency Medical Services Award. I'm sure that was absolutely well-deserved. And the comp plan, that's been brought up today, we got a lot of information, we got comp plan, we got infill development. But the comp plan, you know, I'm a huge proponent of process when it comes to how we interact as a council, how we interact with our citizens, how we keep them informed, there's a process. And as long as the process is the best we can do, I mean, you don't, doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna be happy with the end result. But the process is most of it, because you can never make everybody happy. So we're putting it out there, you've gotta avail yourself of that opportunity to go online, call your councilperson, you know, do what it is to get your input, and all of that collectively, and we've got a promise to keep that out there. And I've spoken to city managers, there's no doubt we are going to do it. And every time we get to a point where strategically we think we need to get that information out, we're gonna put it out, and we're gonna have a presentation, so everybody knows what's going on. So with that being said, now we are gonna talk about the violence a little bit. And I really didn't know we were gonna go down to that, to the discussion where we are, because we had a couple of speakers on it. This is a discussion that I'd had yesterday, day before yesterday, and hardly a day goes by when, I'm not speaking to the city manager, and numerous conversations with the chief as well. And I was in the car this morning, coming back from the presentation at the Cove, recognizing their 10th anniversary, I'm listening to talk radio, go figure, and they've got the Governor of Virginia on. And guess what the Governor of Virginia's talking about? The V-word. And what is he doing? What is he going to try to do from the state level? And he's saying, "Well, I got $9 million worth of extra money, and we're gonna find a place to put it, and out of that $9 million, we're gonna devote most of it to trying to provide the assets to address the uptick in violence." And then we have the regional level. I said, "We just went to a regional meeting with the manager last month, we got a lot of good information." But there's always a lot of rhetoric involved. You know, everybody's talking about, "We gotta do something, we gotta do something." You know, we gotta understand that this is something that didn't, it didn't happen overnight, and it's not gonna get fixed overnight. We need to address, you know, I don't know where this term came from, the low-hanging fruit, if you will, you know, the easy stuff, what can we do now to make a difference? We're not gonna change society over difference, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna get everybody a mentor, we're not gonna get everybody a job, we're not gonna get everybody an education tomorrow. We all know that these are things that attribute to the issue. But can we do lights? Can we do cameras? Can we have patrols going here? Can we get our citizens involved? These are things that we can do, and these are things that we are actively working on. We've had a, the manager and the chief and I had already planned on getting together Friday, you know, Friday at 11:30, that's been on for a week or so. I have probably not been as vocal about saying something as I should have, but I want our citizens to know that we hear you, your concerns are our concerns. And make no mistake, there's no question whatsoever that public safety is top of mind. You can count on that. As a city, this council, the city manager, we are committed to allocating any and all available resources to addressing this issue. It's not a question. And I was talking to the chief the other night, we were talking about where cameras are, and city manager said to me, "Well, I don't know where we're gonna get the money." And I said, "We'll find the money." I mean, as far as I'm concerned, money can come out of a reserve account. What better use for it? There's nothing more valuable than somebody's life, period. There's nothing gonna be more detrimental to the health of this city than if people feel like they can't be safe in their own homes. They can't travel downtown, they can't shop, they can't do whatever. So I don't care what it costs, I don't know what everybody else thinks, I'm just one vote, but I really don't care. It's got to be fixed, if that's all it takes. Now, money's not gonna fix everything. Everybody's gonna have to come together to try to solve the problem, just like we've talked about, a little bit at a time. But I want everyone to know that we are on, you know, we are well-aware of what's going on. I'm gonna throw the police chief under the bus, I told him, I guess he's getting used to being under the bus, but, you know, I would like for him just to take a minute, and he's not gonna be able to let you know everything that we're doing, because when we put it out there, then the bad guys know what we're doing too. But to the extent that he can, I would like for him just to take a few minutes and let you know some of the initiatives that he has already done, that our citizens may not know about, and then just get a little bit of his thought process, which we'll follow up later on, once we get more specific into what we can do. So Chief, if you would, please. I'm sorry, I gotta turn you up. Oh, let's see, I gotta find your button, I never hit your button. Let me see, you're down, where is he, over here? Right here. I'll just turn them all on.
There you go.
All right. You on there? Okay, there we go. Whoops. All right, I cut you off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm gonna be very careful to, I wanna give you as much as I can, but I wanna be very careful not to divulge any ways or methods. So I'm looking at this more than anything else. I should first say that the violence that we're seeing, we've gotten a lot of really good intelligence in reference to it. Though there's a general narrative and there's a general norm of people not talking, people are talking. This is not our average and normal crime. The indiscriminate gunfire is way beyond what is the norm. And we've had a good number of citizens, a really good number of citizens come and really try to give us credible information. What we lack right now is eyewitnesses that are willing to come forward and say, "Yes, I saw it, and yes, I will come to court." However, with that being said, we have gotten some really strong information. One of the more difficult things, more difficult challenges to law enforcement, and especially cases of this magnitude, is if we get a case to court and the judge says, "You know, that guy, he probably did it." That means it's not guilty, and they get to come back out and become more powerful on the street. And we're committed to not letting that happen. So one of the number-one things that I wanna do is really approach this from two separate prongs, from two separate sides. You heard the speakers that talked earlier, and they had two very different ways that they felt like policing should be done. And neither of them were necessarily wrong, but both of them were wrong for certain situations. There are times that we have to do what we need to do, we need to take the appropriate police action, and that is it. And then there's times that we are able to be officer-friendly. And then there's times that we are able to be officer-friendly. The professional is able to figure out which one you need to be at what time, for what reason, and articulate why they had to do that. Um, and we have a, a very professional organization. So, the two parts is crime suppression and intense investigation. So, what I mean when I say intense investigation is, we're not just trying to, and this takes time. Uh, my, my detectives are doing an amazing job, um, because we're not just investigating the crime. We have to investigate the crime, we have to investigate the vehicles, we have to investigate everything that they are using to commit these acts of violence, these acts of, of, whether it's, um, gang participation, whatever the case may be. Um, I have kinda done some temporary reorganization of assets, um, and I, I'm not gonna dig too deeply into that, um, but what I've started to do was change some things around, and, um, our officers, yes, they're tired, but they know why they signed up. Yes, they're frustrated, because we're, we're down behind, um, these, these law violators, these, these menaces to public safety, we're, we're right behind them. Um, in several of these situations, we have been right in the area, but everything kinda has to line up perfectly for us. Um, in these situations, they're very quick, um, it's a, and it's incredible level of intensity, and we're trained and ready, and we have the, the equipment to do it, but, you know, sometime you need a little luck to. Um, so, as far as the intense investigation, um, investigating, putting time into investigating the weapons, putting time into, um, putting a great deal of time into the relationships of the people involved that we have identified. We're still trying to identify people, um, that has been going very well. Um, but then you have the crime suppression side, um, because the investigation, we understand that that's gonna take some time, but we need some right-now change. Um, and right-now change is, I, I don't, if they were shooting the other night, I don't want them shooting tonight. Can we guarantee that's not gonna happen? We cannot guarantee that, but we can make it much more difficult for them. And I have re-appropriated, um, assets and resources to make sure that we are strategically targeting these areas and strategically targeting people that we believe are involved at specific times. Um, and we're trying to do it in such a way that we're utilizing, um, uh, the, the analytics, the anal, anal, analysis portion of it, um, to try to give us a better indication of where we need to go and at what times. We are trying to make sure, I mean, our officers are really vested in this. Um, and, and I'll tell you, even, even down to, my school resource officers are out at night doing investigations, trying to get out there and find out who's moving around, what's going on. So, what does that cost? What that cost is, sometimes we're gonna pull over a car, and it might be just some nice citizen in the wrong place at the wrong time. We're gonna make sure that we conduct the traffic stop professionally, we use the, the nationally-recognized traffic stop model, and we're gonna make sure we operate as safely and effectively as possible. But we've got to get down in the trenches, we've got to do old-fashioned, good-old-police work. Um, we've got to knock on doors, we've got to talk to people, we've got to look for furtive movements, we've got to look for people with weapons, and at times, I'll be honest, that makes some citizens uncomfortable. Well, we're all uncomfortable right now with the indiscriminate gunfire. So, um, we are specifically, we have a, a pretty comprehen- comprehensive plan, um, but I can't underscore enough how much the citizen participation has upticked, um, with the recent situation, because these, these are not, we normally have crime in Suffolk, but not crime like this. Um, we are talking to our, our partners in other cities, we're talking to our state and our federal partners as well, um, even partners that we have here inside our cities, Sheriff's Department, Probation and Parole, um, the courts. We're making sure that we're meeting, we're sharing information, and we are developing some pretty significant information. To get it to where we need to get it is still taking some time, but, um, with that being said, um, I, I had a sergeant in Investigations, and he said, "Don't tell me what you don't got, tell me what you got." There are a lot of things that are challenges for what we do, but there are also a lot of things that we can utilize, and we're finding those things. The, this is a teachable moment. Some of our officers, uh, you know, that, that have been here in the last two, three years, you know, this is not what we would consider the norm, this is not the norm in our city. So, they're being quickly educated that, "Hey, you got that training for a reason," and there comes a point that you have to put that training into practice, and I'm extremely, extremely proud of the men and women of the Suffolk Police Department, because when I tell you they're out there, you may not see them if you're not in some of these affected areas and neighborhoods. Um, and there are a lot of police cars that are out there, because we're utilizing some undercover units and, and so forth. Um, but we're out and we are trying to be as proactive as we possibly can within the confines of the law. So, that's just a little bit of what we have specifically right now. Um, we do have some longer-range things that we wanna do. I do think it is important that as we, part of our gang violence, uh, problem and our, um, drug problem is resources, and we need to look at that. And I've, I've talked to a number of groups, I've talked to a number of people, I talked to Mr. Skinner earlier today, and I explained the same thing to him. As, as the United States, one of the things we've been masterful at, and, and our military men and women know this, we're, we've been able to go into a country and do away with that leadership and put in leadership that's going to do the right thing, and then we pour in resources to rebuild that nation. Well, on a much smaller scale, what we sometimes don't consider is the fact that oftentimes, when we go and arrest the drug dealer, the drug dealer may be the only person that's hiring for my particular skill set, so I think. So, when we arrest that drug dealer, we also have to be ready to come behind that arrest with pouring resources into that environment. When we get ready to pour resources, education, um, housing, all of those things that, that have been discussed over and over again, when we pour those resources in, it gives people options. That is a long-range approach. Um, but for, for purposes of tonight, I really trying to keep my comments to the right-now approach, because obviously, right now, this needs to stop. And I'm, I'm here to tell you, people that, people have been calling my phone that, called my phone way back when, when I was working cases. Um, our, our investigators are getting calls, they're getting information. Um, so, I, I, I ask the citizens to keep that information coming. We're running down every lead that we get, and sometimes, yes, it takes time, and sometimes it's difficult, but we're up for the task, and, um, the Suffolk Police Department is ready, and we are going to make a ser- serious, significant impact in what's going on.
Okay, thank you very much, chief. Um, I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate, uh, providing that information, uh, to our citizens, so they do know that how, you know, which initiative, some of them that we have put in there, you mentioned some of the resources, and a lot of those resources we're referring to are human resources, uh, the issues that you're talking about. And those are some of the things that, in our meeting, and, and we want to try to put some processes in place where we can take the human resource a- assets that we have, uh, be it the churches, be it individuals that are willing to mentor, be it the business community, be it the individuals that want to, there, there's a lot of just individual initiatives where people want to do something, but it's not coordinated. So, if we can line up, take those resources, the individuals that are willing to volunteer to do something, and match that up with those communities that need that, and do it as an organized effort, then I think it helps the long-term. The short-term is doing just what you're talking about. It, and it's amazing, in the last eighteen months or so, the whole atmosphere, you're talking about you getting people that are calling you now that might not have called you. It was the same way in the, in the, uh, Mayor's Forum, uh, when the manager was there. I mean, Mayor Alexander and, and, uh, Mayor Glover, it's like, you know, we need to do one thing. These things need to be, these, these individuals, they need to be, they need to be arrested, they need to be caught, they need to put in jail, and they need to go away, we don't wanna see them anymore. Boom. You know, this isn't, well, we, you know, we're not, we're not interested in rehab. You know, we're interested in taking these bad players off the street. And that's kinda the attitude, it's, it's like TSA, when you go to the airport, yeah, I mean, it's a pain, take your shoes off, take this off, and everybody's got a little attitude, but then you stop and think about it. What's the flip side of that? You know, are you willing to suffer through a little bit of that, or do you want your plane to blow up? I mean, really? And that's kinda what the chief's alluding to. Yes, there's gonna be, you know, and a lot of it, you know, your hands are tied too, and we're not allowed the same latitude that you had at, at some point, as far as probable cause and those type of things, to do your job. But I wanna commend the chief, everybody on this department, because, you know, the, they're putting the time in, they're getting the job done, the manager's behind them a hundred percent, and I can assure you that everyone sitting up here today is behind the manager, the chief, and everything else, everyone else, uh, that's involved in addressing this problem. I would say solving this problem, I'm not sure there's ever gonna be a permanent solution to it, you know, uh, but we're certainly going to do the best we can with what we've got. So, with that being said, I didn't mean to take that, that, that long, but I said, "I do appreciate the chief and getting that information out there, and we will try to keep you informed as well." And so, my quote of the night, I was actually gonna talk about something else, but I didn't wanna do that, it's too much time. My quote of the night is from Charles Spurgeon, he's got some great quotes, and you really gotta listen to this one. And that quote is, "None, none are more unjust in their judgments of others than those who have a high opinion of themselves." So, it's a good one, I, it's like my favorite, but anyhow, so with that, there's no other business, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Manager, you all right with it?
Uh, yes, sir.
Uh, we have, can I get a motion to adjourn? Somebody gotta hit the button. Councilman Williams.
Don't move.
And we got Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Any discussion in the motion? Councilman Fawcett, you okay? Any discussion in the motion?
No, sir, I'm okay.
You okay? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.